And we'll be bringing our invocation. Our invocation will be followed by the pledge brought by Officer Tim Haas. Our pastor, please feel free to join us up front for our invocation. Not seeing our pastor, I'm going to lead us and just ask that you would join me in a moment of silence, particularly in respect to the two sheriff deputies that we lost over the past week. Please let us consider them, their families, and the entire law enforcement community and our thoughts at this time while we have a moment of silence. All those willing and able, please stand for our pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, officer. We have a number of presentations this morning, and in fact, commissioners, I'm going to ask that you indulge me in us modifying the order of presentations. We are very fortunate as a county to be celebrating 25 consecutive years of triple AAA credit ratings from Moody's, Fitch, and S&amp;P, and I will ask that we have that first on our agenda. Is everyone okay? I see some nods. Yes, I have a... Okay, very good. Thank you. So if you can join me down front, please.
That's fine.
Yes. Are there other guests that you will...
Yes, I'm gonna... Just want to say a few words and then...
You tell me how you want to flow. Please do.
Okay. Thank you. So 2022 is the 25th consecutive year of Cobb County's triple AAA rating. That is the highest possible rating, and only 49 counties in the United States have all three or have a triple AAA rating by all three agencies. Only three of those are in the state of Georgia: Cobb County, Gwinnett, and Columbia County. And this was no easy journey, and this has taken a long time, and we've had some tremendous leaders along the way, and I do want to thank our current chairwoman, our current board, for their leadership and role in that process, as well as our current county manager. We do have some special guests with us today. At the beginning of our triple AAA, our finance director, former finance director Virgil Moon, and our... Virgil, would you come on up front with us, please? Would you come on up front? We also have our former finance director Brad Bowers with us today. And I do want to recognize the contributions of our friend and colleague, the late Jim Pearson, the former finance director of Cobb County as well. This team was from the beginning to where we are today, and it couldn't be done without their work and leadership. With that being said, we did want to recognize Dr. Jackie McMorris, our current county manager, but our former county manager, Mr. David Hankerson, is with us today.
Please, come on up.
Come on up front, please. And then we also have our former county manager, Mr. Rob Hosack. And last but not least, I do want to thank our current finance team for their leadership and contribution in this process, and as well as the entire leadership of county staff. This is a group and team effort without a doubt, and it couldn't be done without the strong management team that we have. So with that, Board of Commissioners, if you've come down front, we have a little something for you. I just want to thank you again for all of your work and leadership in doing this, and I know we're also in a... Does anybody have anything they would like to say before our photo? Pass it down.
Thank you to the Board of Commissioners for recognizing how important it is to maintain this for 25 years in a row. It's not just a recognition of the finance department, but it's a recognition of the leadership of the county for the 25 years, including today's leadership, and it will —I feel like it will continue to be so for years to come. We're blessed with a great county, a great business community, a great school system, a great community overall that works together to make Cobb County as special as it is.
He pretty much said it all, but I want to make sure that we recognize all those in the finance department throughout the whole years—25 years—they did a fantastic job and supported each of us tremendously, and just wanted to make sure they get recognized.
I would say ditto to what's been said, but I want to say that when people want to know a little bit about Cobb, I say, "Look at the AAA rating," because the rating agencies watch their agencies very, very close. And AAA is about financing, but it's a lot more than financing. It's about leadership. It's about community relationships. It's about business relationships, and it is very difficult. Before I was hired, I was challenged at the fact that I was going to be supportive of a AAA rating, and I was hired in '93. We got a AAA, first one in '95, and then we got a third AAA in '97, and I'm just glad to be part of a great team. We still have a great team. That's what it's going to take: planning, strategic planning, maintaining, knowing the community, knowing what you're doing. All that's a part of AAA, and I could sit here and talk about AAA all day because we were so proud of what we had done, and I think with the continued leadership, the AAA says a lot about Cobb County, says a lot about that. It's very difficult to obtain, but very easy to lose. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. This is quite an accomplishment, and I'm honored to have been part of the AAA for 12 of the 25 years. It does take a team. Our finance department works hard every day, but it takes all of us: all the departments, the board, our county managers, and everyone to make this happen, and I hope and pray we keep it for another 25 years at least.
Our finance leadership presented this award today to us, but you are deserving of a great award, and I hope that you prepared a couple for yourself. If not, we owe that to you. It is because of your dedicated service and leadership in guiding us with the decisions that we make is what has contributed to us being here today. So I personally want to thank both of you for that. I had a brief conversation with Virgil before coming here this morning, and while we can tout our leadership as a board—which does weigh into this—living in a great county is also a significant factor in this, and he underscored that. If we didn't have the great economy that we've had here, the wonderful business community that we've had here, the attractive communities that we have here, the residents that we have here that contribute to our counties, our stellar amenities, and more, we would have a challenge in accomplishing what we've done today. So there are a lot of people who are also deserving of this award alongside with us. I'm grateful that we can continue this, and I would love to see us do this for at least another 25 more years.
I just want to echo pretty much what everyone else has said, and just to say thank you to you guys and also to the finance team, and also to the gentlemen whose shoulders you have stood on to continue to make sure that Cobb County is in the top as respect to ratings. But we know that it is a team effort, and nobody does this alone, so thank you guys for all that you do and all for your team as well.
Really just want to echo those sentiments. Just appreciate all of the work and commitment from county manager all the way to across the departments, certainly the finance team, you know, from an accounting, from an evaluation, risk analysis standpoint. That leadership has to originate and circulate all around the departments. Thank you for answering our questions. It just—it helps us stay informed, it helps the community stay informed, and it's a team effort, but thank you for spearheading the vision, and we're just going to carry on the
Again, congratulations, but more importantly, thank you to those who led us to this place.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you. Thank you again. Yes.
I think it's the reward for being the top.
I can't get behind this guy.
All right, looking good. Here we go. Three. Okay, here we go. Three, two, and we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. This is a question. I'm ready. I'm ready. Good job. Listen, yes. Not Virgil. All right. The next order of business is to recognize this week for the series of events that GMSDC will be holding. Is anyone here from that organization? Please join me up front. We recognize Minority Business Opportunity Week.
There we go. Good morning once again. I'm pleased to present this proclamation to the Georgia Minority Supplier Development Council. Whereas on September 19 through the 23rd of 2022, the Georgia Minority Supplier Development Council will host a series of events and activities during the week to stimulate opportunities and explore ways for minority businesses to do business with corporate and governmental supply chains. And whereas for 47 years, the GMSDC, Georgia's leading small business development and supplier diversity organization, has certified minority business enterprise firms, developed their capacity, capability, and competency, and facilitated partnerships with corporations and governments in need of their goods and services. Whereas the GMSDC serves more than 400 corporations that are headquartered in Georgia or have a significant presence here, as well as more than 900 certified minority business enterprise firms. And whereas the GMSDC has helped minority business enterprise firms create thousands of jobs, generate billions of dollars in revenues, and help build sustainable enterprises. It continues to support Georgia's minority business enterprises through its various signature events and educational programs designed to provide opportunities for growth, success, and long-term sustainability. Therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 19 through the 23rd of 2022 as the Minority Business Opportunity Week in Cobb County, Georgia, to honor the achievements of minority businesses and their importance to our economy. This the 13th day of September 2022.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good heavens.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Key, and I'm the CEO of the Georgia Minority Supplier Development Council, GMSDC. And first of all, I'd like to thank the chairwoman and the hall commission for your support of minority businesses in Cobb County. You're in good company as we celebrate this week. The governor will declare this as Minority Business Opportunity Week throughout the whole week, as well as the other counties. You're in good company with DeKalb, and Fulton, and Clayton, and Henry, and Gwinnett, and throughout the whole state—the cities, Savannah, Columbus, Macon. So everyone will be focused on minority businesses doing this week in the celebration of their contributions and how they impact the economy. So again, thank you so much. Know that you've got a friend in GMSDC. Anything we can do to support Cobb County, you can count on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Looking good. Thank you. You took a quick break. Okay. Our next two proclamations will be brought by Commissioner Burl.
Good morning, everyone. Today I have the honor of presenting proclamations for Constitution Day to two great groups of women. So if I could have the Daughters of the American Revolution come up first, I'll do yours first. And while they're making their way up, I would just like to say how important our constitution is. You know, as an elected official, we all take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of Georgia and our local Cobb County. How are you? Good morning. Hey, Emily. Whereas Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document and is celebrated the week of September 17 through the 23rd. It will be the 235th anniversary of drafting the Constitution on September 17, 1787. The United States Constitution is a symbol of the tenacity Americans have displayed throughout history to maintain our liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. And whereas this celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to set aside September 17 through the 23 annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later signed into law by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. And whereas the purpose of the Constitution Week celebration is to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, inform people that this important document is the foundation of our way of life and encourage study of the historical events that led to the framing of the Constitution on September 1787. And whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution also built a structure in tribute to the Constitution of the United States, Constitution Hall, which is a performing arts center, opened in 1929. And therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 7 through the 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in Cobb County, and we thank the Daughters of the American Revolution for its tireless advocacy on behalf of all citizens. We encourage all residents to learn more about this important document and celebrate the freedoms it affords. This the 13th day of September 2022. We would. We are so proud to be here today, celebrating the development of this wonderful document which has been in existence for 235 years. That's pretty amazing. As Daughters of the American Revolution, we're very proud to support our schools and the education of our students about the Constitution because they are going to be tomorrow's leaders. We also are extremely excited to have a community celebration on Saturday, September 17, 235 years after the signing of that document on the Marietta Square at 3 o'clock, and we invite the community to come join with us to celebrate this document. 3 o'clock, we're going to have music, we're going to have prayers, we're going to have the pledge, and we're going to remind ourselves how important this is and how we make our country a better place. Thank you. Good. Okay, we'll get a picture. All right, here we go. Thank you, ladies, for all the work you do. Do you want me...
Yes.
We're going to do this again on Saturday. The ringing of the bells. Thank you.
Ringing of the bells.
Now I'd like to ask the ladies from the Barbara Hickey Constitution Day Fund to come up as well. This group started 12 years ago?
No. A little longer than that.
2010?
Yeah.
Hmm?
What? About 16.
16 years ago? Okay. Well, we may have to correct this. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and then they're going to tell you a little bit about what they do. This is the... How many consecutive years have we done Constitution in the schools?
All those.
Since 2016. These ladies distribute constitutions to 4th graders in the Cobb County School District and also the City of Marietta schools. So whereas the U.S. Constitution is a symbol of the tenacity Americans have displayed through history to maintain our liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. September 17 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of this important document by 39 brave men at the Constitution Convention in Philadelphia. And whereas the framers established a strong federal government able to provide the energy and stability its people require while simultaneously limiting its reach and reserving all powers not expressly assigned to the federal government and to the states and the people. It is vital that all Americans read, study, and understand the greatest document of human liberty and help protect the freedoms set forth in the Bill of Rights. And whereas Constitution Day launched in Cobb County through the efforts of Millie Rogers in 2010, who was the immediate past president of the Georgia Federation of Republican Women and the past president of the Cobb Republican Women's Club. Barbara Hickey worked with Ms. Rogers in the initial efforts and was joined by the Constitution Day Committee of the Cobb County Republican Women's Club. The committee delivered constitutions to elementary students in both the Cobb County and Marietta school systems. And whereas Barbara Hickey established the Constitution Day Fund as part of the Barbara Hickey Children's Fund in 2018 to raise money for distributing constitutions to elementary school students in Cobb County and Marietta City Schools. The continued work of supporters is a great way to help educate our youth and honor the efforts of those who came before them. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 17, 2022, as Constitution Day in Cobb County, and we thank the Barbara Hickey Constitution Day Fund and its supporters for their involvement in the Constitution booklet project and efforts to educate the public. We encourage all residents to read and study this magnificent document and celebrate the 235th anniversary of its creation. This the 13th day of September 2022. Well, this is a small committee that we have been working with for the past three years since Barbara passed away, and it is in Barbara's honor that we carry this on. We contribute the constitutions to the children in the Cobb and Marietta schools. Each one of those little booklets costs us a dollar. This small committee raises the money so that we can do that. So this year, we're spending about $3,000 in order to put the constitutions in the schools, and we're just looking for support because we really believe that it is a wonderful thing to be able to teach our children about our history and where we're going for the future. This is Marcia Stemey and Rose Wing, and this little group, along with Jim Hickey, who is the husband of Barbara, yesterday packed 20—about 2,200 of them, and then we have the rest to do tomorrow. So this is an honor, and we really appreciate it. Thank you, Joanne. And I would like to add—this is Roseanne Hall—and Marcia Stemey is also a Daughters of the American Revolution, but she didn't come up for both.
Thank you. With that, we're going to take a brief recess, and we'll come back in about five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will go ahead and declare this public hearing open for this agenda item only. And again, this is with respect to the fee schedule for Cobb County's record zone holders. All speakers will have a total of three minutes to speak, and we'll take an unlimited number of speakers towards this matter only. Mr. Harford, are you here?
Yes, thank you.
My name's Craig Harflett, and I would like to say that the fee schedule, of course it would go up, because gas just went through the roof, but it's going to come back off it, and it should have a clause in there to adjust. If the energy costs come down, the fee schedule should come down, but our governor has done a lot as far as taking the tax off of gas, so there's a lot of moving parts there, but it's like our homestead, not the homestead, the property tax. There should be a means, a mechanism within this fee structure that can adjust, because gas spikes and then it comes down, but it does the damage in between.
Mr. Harford, do you mind coming a little bit closer to the mic?
Okay.
Thank you.
But I hope you heard what I said, that it just needs this component, because it's the thing that affects everything in our budgets, yours, ours, the county's. But thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for this agenda item, again, as it pertains to the record zone fee schedule? Not seeing any, I'll go ahead and declare the...excuse me, ma'am, are you approaching to speak? Okay, yes, ma'am. Move.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Lisa Cupid, and the rest of the Commissioners. My name is Linda K. Coleman. I've lived in unincorporated Cobb County for twenty-two years. I've only had two vendors, American Disposal.
Yes, I'm sorry, ma'am, this is for towing services. We're almost there, but we're not quite there yet regarding the...
May I just sit here until this time?
I will defer to our county attorney on where she can sit as she waits.
All right, thank you so much. I'm real happy to be here. I'm sorry I'm out of order.
It's okay.
But this decision about the trash is so near and dear to my heart.
Thank you. We look forward to having you come up. In fact, we'll have you speak first when that hearing...
All right, thank you.
We appreciate your initiative. Okay. Are there any other persons here wishing to address the record zone fee schedule? With that, I'll go ahead and declare that public hearing to be closed. Did you want to add anything, Randy? Or Commissioners, did you have anything to add? Commissioner Gambrell, can you hear us? Okay, she's good. Thank you. Oh, we had one...I'm sorry, Dr. Carter, we have one comment.
This may be for you, Madam Chair. This is just the public hearing. This will not come back to a vote till October meeting or the September twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh.
Okay. And then I did notice that there is a fuel surcharge adjustment in Item G on page twenty.
There is.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Director. With that, we're going to move on to our next public hearing, which will be brought by DOT with respect to Cobb Link.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Drew Wrestler, DOT. Our public hearing this morning is related to the operation maintenance and operation support for Cobb Link, which is a service of the Department's Transit Division, and it is managed through a multi-year contract with a private firm in order to provide drivers, mechanics, and support staff. On...currently, we are on a one-year option with First Transit, and on May tenth, the Board authorized advertisement for and conduct of both this public hearing, as well as provided permission to be able to issue requests for proposals for this service. Therefore, the Department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the operations, maintenance, and administrative support services for Cobb Link, a service of the Transit Division.
Thank you, Director. With that, I will go ahead and declare this public hearing open. Again, an unlimited number of speakers can approach and speak towards this matter and this matter only, and you will have a total of three minutes to speak regarding this matter. Are there any speakers? Please approach. This is, again, with respect to transit service, our bus services. We have four public hearings today, so our final one, which will address the code, will address the waste matter. Okay, not seeing any speakers with respect to this matter, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. And Director, I believe you have another?
I've got none.
Excuse me. That will be our Community Development Department will have the next public hearing. Thank you, Drew.
Good morning, everyone. Jessica Gwen, Cobb County Community Development Director. The first public hearing that we're bringing forth this morning is to request a public hearing for a Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance. This is for property located at seven-seventy-one Burning Tree Drive. This property, being located within the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan area, is required to have a certificate of compliance in order to build a single-family home, a new home, on a vacant one-acre lot. This will be a total land disturbance of twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-four feet, square feet, for an impervious area of eleven-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-two square feet. Both of these are well within the maximum allowable, and the Atlanta Regional Commission has conducted a review of the application and recommends approval. So this morning, we just asked that the Chair open the public hearing.
Thank you. Again, as the other public hearings went, this public hearing will be open for speakers to address this matter with respect to the certificate for the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan. This public hearing is for that matter and that matter only. We'll take an unlimited number of speakers for a maximum of three minutes. Speakers can feel free to approach at this time. Not seeing any, we'll declare this public hearing closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And with the public hearing having been conducted, at this point, staff would ask that the Board consider approval of that certificate.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Motion to approve the certificate.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please either show on the screen, and I believe we will hear from Commissioner Gambrell. Okay, the motion passes for...yes, four-zero, without Commissioner Gambrell participating in this vote.
Can you say yes?
Yes.
You can ask for a verbal. Can we get a verbal? I don't know if it's...
We'll go ahead. Please, let's go ahead and take a recess, please. Thank you.
...A of the Cobb County Code of Ordinances. So, our recommendation is that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing regarding proposed changes to the fee schedule for the Cobb County record zone holders that perform toves within the police districts.
Thank you, Director. With that, I will declare the public hearing open for this agenda item only, and again, this is with respect to the fee schedule for Cobb County's record zone holders. All speakers will have a total of three minutes to speak, and we'll take an unlimited number of speakers towards this matter only. Mr. Harford, are you here? Yes, thank you.
My name's Craig Harford, and I would like to say that the fee schedule, of course it would go up because gas just went through the roof, but it's going to come back off it, and it should have a clause in there to adjust. If the energy costs come down, the fee schedule should come down, but our governor has done a lot as far as taking the tax off of gas, so there's a lot of moving parts there, but it's like our homestead, not the homestead, the property tax. There should be a means, a mechanism within this fee structure that can adjust because gas spikes and then it comes down, but it does the damage in between.
Mr. Harford, do you mind coming a little bit closer to the mic?
Okay.
Thank you.
But I hope you heard what I said, but it just needs this component because it's the thing that affects everything in our budgets, yours, ours, the county's. But thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for this agenda item, again, as it pertains to the record zone fee schedule? Not seeing any, I'll go ahead and declare the -- excuse me, ma'am, are you approaching to speak? Okay, yes, ma'am. Move away.
Good morning, Chairwoman Lisa Cupid and the rest of the Commissioners. My name is Linda K. Coleman. I've lived in unincorporated Cobb County for 22 years. I've only had two vendors, American Disposal.
Yes, I'm sorry, ma'am, this is for towing services.
Okay.
We're almost there, but we're not quite there yet regarding the --
May I just sit here until this time?
I will defer to our county attorney on where she can sit as she waits.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm real happy to be here. I'm sorry I'm out of order.
It's okay.
But this decision about the trash is so near and dear to my heart.
Thank you. We look forward to having you come up. In fact, we'll have you speak first when that hearing --
All right, thank you.
We appreciate your initiative. Are there any other persons here wishing to address the record zone fee schedule? With that, I'll go ahead and declare that public hearing to be closed. Did you want to add anything, Randy? Commissioners, did you have anything to add? Commissioner Gambrell, can you hear us? Okay, she's good. Thank you. Oh, we had one -- I'm sorry, Dr. Carter, we have one comment.
This may be for you, Madam Chair. This is just the public hearing. This will not come back to a vote till October meeting or the September 27th.
September 27th.
Okay. And then I did notice that there is a fuel surcharge adjustment in Item G on page 20.
There is.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Director, thank you. With that, we're going to move on to our next public hearing, which will be brought by DOT with respect to Cobb Link.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners, Drew Wrestler, DOT. Our public hearing this morning is related to the operation maintenance and operation support for Cobb Link, which is a service of the department's Transit Division, and it is managed through a multi-year contract with a private firm in order to provide drivers, mechanics, and support staff. Currently, we are on a one-year option with First Transit, and on May 10th, the Board authorized advertisement for and conduct of both this public hearing as well as provided permission to be able to issue requests for proposals for this service. Therefore, the Department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the operations, maintenance, and administrative support services for Cobb Link, a service of the Transit Division.
Thank you, Director. With that, I will go ahead and declare this public hearing open. Again, an unlimited number of speakers can approach and speak towards this matter and this matter only, and you will have a total of three minutes to speak regarding this matter. Are there any speakers? This is again with respect to transit service, our bus services. We have four public hearings today, so our final one, which will address the code, will address the waste matter. Okay, not seeing any speakers with respect to this matter, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. And Director, I believe you have another?
I do not.
Excuse me, that will be our Community Development Department will have the next public hearing. Thank you, Drew.
Jessica Gwynne, Cobb County Community Development Director. The first public hearing that we're bringing forth this morning is to request a public hearing for a Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance. This is for property located at 771 Burning Tree Drive. This property, being located within the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan area, is required to have a certificate of compliance in order to build a single-family home, a new home, on a vacant one-acre lot. This will be a total land disturbance of 21,804 feet, square feet, for an impervious area of 11,582 square feet. Both of these are well within the maximum allowable, and the Atlanta Regional Commission has conducted a review of the application and recommends approval. So, this morning, we just asked that the Chair open the public hearing.
Thank you. Again, as the other public hearings went, this public hearing will be open for speakers to address this matter with respect to the certificate for the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan. This public hearing is for that matter and that matter only. We'll take an unlimited number of speakers for a maximum of three minutes. Speakers can feel free to approach at this time. Not seeing any, we'll declare this public hearing closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And with the public hearing having been conducted, at this point, staff would ask that the Board consider approval of that certificate.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Motion to approve the certificate.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please either show on the screen, and I believe we will hear from Okay, the motion passes for, yes, for zero without Commissioner Gambrell participating in this vote. Can you say yes?
Yes.
You can ask for a verbal. Can we get a verbal? I don't know if it's -- Well, go ahead. Please, let's go ahead and take a recess, please. Thank you.
Twenty-five percent of those units inspected. Those inspections would have to be conducted by a licensed, a certified building inspector. It's not something that staff would do. It would be the responsibility of the property manager or the property owner to select someone, to hire someone to conduct that inspection, and they would have to be someone who was approved on our approved list of inspectors who had met the requirements to be properly certified. If there are issues that are noncompliant, then at that point, they would have the opportunity, provided it's not a life safety issue, of course, to present a plan to the chief building official to address those noncompliant matters, and an extension of up to a year could be granted. So tied closely to that is the amendment to Chapter Two, and Chapter Two just gives our Code Enforcement Division authority to enforce that new proposed section in Chapter Eighteen pertaining to multifamily rental housing inspections. The next amendment is to Chapter Fifty-four. This is the Fire Prevention and Protection Chapter, and this is one that came forward earlier this year, and there have been some adjustments to the language made to clarify it a little bit better, but it pertains to requiring a permit for outdoor social gatherings when we anticipate that those gatherings may achieve a crowd of 1,000 people or more. That would be based on the estimate at any one given time, not throughout the event, and that is, they would have to come to the fire marshal's office to provide a plan showing that they're going to have proper EMS services, hydration stations, fire watch, crowd management techniques, and also messaging, all those things that may be required to ensure that that event can be conducted in a safe manner. Moving swiftly right along, Chapter Seventy-eight, this is our licensing section, and this pertains to short-term rentals. Again, this is one that's been presented a couple of times. It was presented most recently back in January, February this year, and it really has not changed significantly, other than just a couple of little adjustments to the language, but substant-- there's no substantive changes to it at this point. We're just asking that the board discuss this and give us some additional feedback here, but short-term rentals would be those rentals that do not exceed thirty consecutive days, so you think about VRBOs, Airbnbs, and those sorts of things. It would require a short-term rental certificate. This would be issued by the Business License Division, and there would be a separate certificate required for each short-term rental. Each short-term rental would be required to designate a short-term rental agent, and that's really what's key to the short-term rental code that's being proposed. Currently, we have no codes pertaining to short-term rentals, so they're just operating out there. If there's a problem with a short-term rental, whether it's noise, or parking, or litter, or whatever those issues are, you know, we often don't have a contact who's a representative of that property that we can reach out to to address the issue. So what's being proposed is that they would be required to have a short-term rental agent who would be the contact, the local contact, who's available at all times for us to reach out to if there's an issue. That name and contact information would need to be available in the short-term rental unit, and it would also have to be provided to us, and if there were to be any changes to that short-term rental agent, then they would be required to submit that to us in writing within five days. Standard conditions for short-term rentals are really the same conditions for any single-family home here in Cobb County. They would be permitted in the residential zoning districts. It would have to be a structure with a valid certificate of occupancy, so your travel trailer or RV parked in the backyard is not a structure with a certificate of occupancy. That would not qualify as a short-term rental. They would have to meet all the same requirements pertaining to single-family residences, so the same requirements for parking. The occupancy for single-family residences in Cobb, per our code, is one adult per 390 square feet, and then, of course, they would have to adhere to all building fire, health, and sanitation regulations. And on the advertising for the short-term rental, they would be required to provide the maximum occupancy, the maximum number of vehicles, and also the noise regulations, and that would also need to be posted within the unit. Complaints would be submitted to code enforcement, but we are also proposing that Cobb Police would have the authority to enforce this section and issue citations. Often, the issues that arise with short-term rentals are issues that may happen after hours, perhaps, noise issues, parking issues, those sorts of things, and if there is a violation, then the violation, and I think this is where it really helps us with enforcement, the violation would be issued to the property owner as well as to the short-term rental agent. Currently, by nature of the short-term occupants, if there's an issue with noise, or a party, or people blocking the road with cars and what have you, if we don't address it right then, it won't get addressed, and certainly, the police would go out and respond, but ultimately, we don't have anything right now to hold the owner's feet to the fire if they continue to rent their unit out to people who are not going to be good neighbors. So through this code, it would really, the onus would be on the owner and the short-term rental agent to ensure that our codes and our expectations here in Cobb County are being met, and that they're renting to people who are going to be responsible and act just as they would if that was their own neighborhood. The penalties, first violation within a twelve-month period, $500; second violation within twelve months is 750, and then, with a third violation within twelve months, at that point, the certificate could be revoked, as well as any pending certificates. Taxation would be just as it is for other lodging establishments in Cobb County. Hotel motel taxes are already being collected for the ones that are advertised on the platforms. Tourism fees would also be collected, as well as any other state and local fees pertaining to lodging of individuals, and then, the owner would be responsible for collecting that payment and submitting it to the state and county as required. The next chapter that's proposed for amendment today is Chapter Eighty-three, Nuisance, and this was another commissioner-sponsored proposal that came as a recommendation, I believe, from a community group here. We always appreciate the input of our civic groups that provide thoughtful input into the code amendment process. This one is for weed control. Currently, properties that exceed 40,000 square feet, so about an acre, are exempt from the weed control ordinance. This would maintain the exemption for 40,000-square-foot or larger properties unless there is a building or structure located within 75 feet of the public right-of-way. So if there is a building or structure within 75 feet of the public right-of-way, then the property owner would be required to maintain the yard so that the weeds do not exceed 12 inches in height between the structure and the right-of-way itself, and this will ensure that, you know, even for those lots of an acre or more, that the front yard and the view from the public right-of-way is what we would expect. Chapter Ninety, this is another one that came forward earlier this year and just has a couple of tweaks to the language based on the feedback that we received earlier. This is regarding smoking in county-owned and maintained parks, and this just specifies that smoking or vaping would be prohibited within the boundaries of any park, sports complex, recreation area, or facility owned, leased, or operated by Cobb County, and then it gives the Parks Director the sole discretion to designate smoking areas in those facilities. Chapter One-O-two, Solid Waste, and, you know, I know there's been a lot of great discussion, a lot of great feedback. There was the forum with the haulers that was held since our work session. With all that being said, and understanding that the board may have some thoughts and discussion on how they'd like to move forward with us today, I'm not going to go through the slides, however, if the board does have any questions, Dr. Jonathan Jenkins, of course, is here to answer those. So we will skip right through those. And that brings us to Chapter One-O-six, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places. This pertains to the sidewalk development fund, and right now, there's a fund available for new developments to contribute to, rather than building the sidewalk themselves, to pay a fee in lieu of that sidewalk construction, and that gives the DOT the ability to time that sidewalk construction in a right way with any other projects they may already have planned. Sometimes, it may be more efficient to have the county go ahead and put those sidewalks in, rather than having the developer do it, so this would, you know, it's already in place to allow for that contribution, but this expands it a little bit. And also, as you'll see here, it also provides the opportunity that it could also be utilized for other roadway improvements that are based on specific site project cost estimation that would be provided to the DOT. So if there are any questions on this, again, this is one that came forward earlier this year, and I know that Drew and his team at DOT have worked hard on this one, so I know that he'll be glad to answer any questions that may pertain to this item. Chapter One-Ten is another one that we've done some work on since the public presentation at the work session, and I want to just hit the highlights of this one with regard to the intent, and this was another commissioner-sponsored proposal. Right now, the private street section in our code is currently lacking, it's not very thorough, and doesn't really give any clear direction about the standards for private streets. So the intent here is that for private streets in new developments, whether it's a residential or commercial, industrial, whatever the type of development is, that those private streets would be built to county standards. The intent being that we would ensure that those roads would be built in such a way that they're going to be durable, that they're going to be safe, and that they can be maintained in perpetuity. Also, the code calls for developments having private streets, that there would be a mandatory homeowners' association or property owners' association, whatever that appropriate mechanism is, to ensure that someone is assigned a long-term responsibility for maintaining those roads and those facilities. So the discussion that we've been having, though, with the county attorney's office and also just between DOT and also community development, is thinking through, how do we ensure that we're achieving this, but also that we are providing the right mechanism to be sure that this can be maintained in perpetuity, that the funds are going to continue to be there as that association takes over, that down the road, they will have the funding available to, you know, maintain the roads? So that's, we have a revised draft that'll be coming to you for the second public hearing, and I'll give you a good detailed summary of that whenever it comes out, but ultimately, our goal was to ensure that we would achieve the goal of making sure those roads are maintained in perpetuity, but also to do so without unduly burdening the developer, and also without making it unduly burdensome to enforce, so that's the conversation that we've had, and I think that we've achieved a good resolution on that. The other piece of this pertains to hazardous private streets, and we do have some examples of private streets that are already existing where they haven't been maintained over the year. Perhaps the only piece of property that the original owner owns at this point is the street itself, and they're no longer maintaining that. So what this will do is it'll give us a mechanism that if there is a hazardous private street, the DOT Director would have the authority to shut that down, and that we would work with the property owner to get that street either brought to the appropriate standard, or there's a mechanism in here that, you know, if the determination's made that the county needs to move forward with fixing that situation on our own, that there's a mechanism to recoup the cost for that. So that's just hitting the highlights of that one. Moving on to Chapter One-Thirty-four, this is our zoning chapter, and the zoning chapter was actually presented to the Planning Commission last week at their Planning Commission public hearing, so that was the first public hearing for zoning. They only hear amendments to the zoning ordinance, so they only talked about One-Thirty-four, and they did recommend approval of the amendments with just a couple of minor changes. The first is to add a definition of bulk landscape material business. Currently, our code provides for a farm and garden supply store, which you could go purchase a bag of mulch, or you could back your pickup truck up and load up a full load of uncovered mulch. So recognizing that that really is sort of two different types of uses, and maybe the bulk landscape materials of gravel, mulch, what have you, that may be more appropriate in a more industrial area, we've separated that out into a different classification, so we've incorporated a definition for bulk landscape material business. There's an accompanying amendment to One-Thirty-four, One-Ninety-two, which is the use chart, to add that as a permitted use in the light industrial, as well as the heavy industrial zoning districts, and then also an amendment to One-Thirty-four, Two-Thirty, and One-Thirty-four, Two-Thirty-one, respectively, to list that among the permitted uses in both the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts. We also incorporated a definition for heavy automotive repair establishment into the definitions chapter. This was actually already defined in the GC and HI district regulations, but was not included in the definitions section, where really it should be, and included additional standards that would limit outdoor storage, overnight storage of vehicles to be repaired to a maximum of three vehicles per storage bay, no outside storage except in dumpsters and other appropriate containers under the rear of the structure, and then no outdoor dismantling of the engine's transmission or body. And we've also added the standards pertaining to the limitations on the number of vehicles parked outside overnight and the outside storage to the light automotive repair definition, which does not include engines and transmissions. That wouldn't be allowable there anyway, so we did not include the dismantling of the engines and transmissions because that's beyond the scope of light industrial or light automotive repair. The next thing that we'll have a little bit of conversation about is One-Thirty-four, One-Twenty-one. This is another one that came forward earlier this year. There was a lot of great feedback into this, and with regard to traffic studies, and when those would be expected as part of the zoning process. As you know, currently, the traffic study and the requirement for a traffic study is based on the number of units or the square footage. A 50,000-square-foot warehouse is not going to generate the same level of traffic that a 50,000-square-foot grocery store would. So with that being said, DOT has proposed a great amendment to this section to tie the necessity for a traffic study to the number of trips that are expected to be generated as a result of that, of that new use, and I think that that'll result in, you know, getting the appropriate information that the board needs to make decisions on zonings. Also, an issue that frequently comes up is that we often receive the traffic study last minute. Receiving that traffic study at the very last minute doesn't give our staff and the DOT staff the adequate time to review it and to make recommendations for what improvements may be necessary. It also doesn't give the Planning Commission, the public, and also the Board of Commissioners the opportunity to review it and to understand it, so the way that the code is proposed, those would be required within at least thirty days prior to the Planning Commission public hearing. At that point, if it's not received within that timeframe, the zoning division manager would have the authority to continue that case to the next agenda. One-Thirty-four, One-Sixty-two, this is the general description of the zoning districts. As you know, and as we've discussed, there are a number of places in the zoning ordinance where we have duplicative information, and often, that results in something getting changed in one section, and then it doesn't get changed in the other four places that it's listed. So what we're proposing here is to delete this section in its entirety. This is the general description of the zoning district. It goes district by district, a brief description of what that district is. That language almost exactly mirrors the language that's in each section of the district regulations, that spells out the purpose and intent of each zoning district, so it's duplicative and really not, not something that we need to have in there twice or four times, so at this point, we're proposing just to remove that to streamline the code a little bit. The next several are very similar, and this is for all of our residential multifamily districts. Again, a commissioner-sponsored proposal. As you'll recall, when we adopted the short, or these Purpose-Built Student Housing Code a couple of years ago, there were some requirements in there for a security plan. The proposal at this point is to incorporate those requirements into all of our multifamily districts, so it would require a security plan to be coordinated with law enforcement to incorporate the best practices of crime prevention through environmental design, requiring annual review of the plan by the property manager to ensure that it's achieving the goal there, and also that the plan should be provided to the county upon request. So that would be in all of our multifamily districts, RM-Eight, RM-12, RM-16, PVC, RMR, RHR, and RRC. The next amendment is One-Thirty-four, Two-Sixty-six pertaining to gas station pumps and canopies. Currently, we do have a section that discusses setbacks for gas station pumps and canopies. This would add a requirement for lighting, and we have some issues throughout the county where very bright lighting has been installed on the tops of gas station canopies that spills over into the roadway and also to adjoining properties. So with this, this new code, any lighting for gas station, gas station canopies would be required to be mounted on or recessed into the underside of the canopy, and it would need to be fully shielded so that the light is directed where it's needed and not spilling out onto adjacent properties. The lighting would not exceed 50-foot candles, and no lights would be mounted on the top or sides of the canopy. And then the final section that we're proposing for amendment this morning is Sign Maintenance, One-Thirty-four, Two, Three-Twenty-four. This will be a new section, requiring, just as we did a couple of years ago, with the exterior property maintenance standards, that those signs are also continued to be maintained over the years, that they be protected from the elements and repainted as necessary, free from holes, breaks, rust, and looser writing materials, and we're also going to incorporate into that, you know, holes being where perhaps a tenant panel has been removed so that we don't just see the bare light bulbs in there. Faded signs would need to be repaired or replaced. Any missing or misaligned lettering would need to be repaired or replaced. If there's a monument base of brick, stone, stucco, what have you, that would also need to continue to be maintained, and illumination devices would need to be in good working order. And that's the, that's the code amendment package for this fall, so as I said, we had the public hearing for One-Thirty-four only on September sixth at the Planning Commission hearing. This is the first official public hearing before the Board of Commissioners for all of the chapters. From here, what we'll do, and just so you know, the package that's out there right now that's public, that's the same package that was published whenever the code amendments were initially put out there earlier this summer. We've gotten a lot of good feedback already, and I know you all have received some emails. We've met with you guys. We've, again, received a lot of good feedback that we'll incorporate into the draft. You'll have those updated drafts in your next packet for the September twenty-seventh meeting, and of course, we'll make those available publicly online, and I'll include with that a good breakdown so that you can see, just sort of a cheat sheet on the front, what changes have been made in each section and why, so that you can see how your comments, as well as the public comment, has been incorporated into the new draft. So the public hearing number two will be 7:00 PM on September twenty-seventh, and that'll be the board's first opportunity to take action on these amendments. This morning, we just asked the chair to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Director. For our county attorney, did you want to add anything to that before we move into our public hearing?
No, it'd be up to the board if you wanted to pull any particular section regarding that. You could do it before the public hearing, or you could do it after the public hearing, after you've heard comments related to that.
Thank you. Before I start the public hearing, I recognize that the preponderance of feedback that we have received has been with respect to the solid waste ordinance that has been proposed. We had a work session with respect to all of the ordinances on the twenty-third, and we had a follow-up meeting with haulers on August thirty-first. On August twenty-third, this board shared that we were not interested in limiting our code to have one hauler per district. However, that clearly was not articulated broadly enough based on the amount of feedback that we've received. It is our intent to work with our existing haulers to address the myriad of issues that have come before this board, over what we've heard have been at least spanning since the last recession from 2011, and certainly have morphed and grown throughout this pandemic. I do believe that there is general consensus from this board to pull this code so that we can continue having additional dialogue with those that are providing sanitation services in the county, and I will, for the interest of time, I will have us move forward with that, and certainly will give commissioners opportunity to speak with respect to that before we vote on it. I did want to share some of the reasons that were shared by our staff as to why this code was being put forward, and why I supported them putting forward some type of means for us to address the myriad of issues that we've had. And before I go into those issues, I'd like to share that when our staff does provide code, the commissioners are not drafting the code alongside them. When they put forward the code, that's our opportunity to provide feedback, which is what this time period is for. So with a lot of the emails we've received as to why the commissioners are supporting this, and again, I share our general consensus, I believe no one on this board has articulated support for one hauler per district, and we've immediately, as soon as we had our first hearing, provided our support for maintaining our private commercial structure. But I just wanted to share the reasons that prompted us addressing this. One, we have residents who have no haulers that are providing any service on their street or cul-de-sac, and they have not had any assistance from the county with respect to that. We have some residents who only have one choice for a hauler that they have not been satisfied with, and have not had any assistance from the county in trying to provide additional haulers to be able to service them, again, recognizing we have some streets and communities in our county that are not receiving service. We have residents who have issues with multiple haulers driving through their neighborhood multiple days each week and seeing trash cans on their street every day of the week. We have residents who have missed garbage and/or recycling pickups for consecutive weeks and have reached out to the county and have not received adequate support. We also have significant illegal dumping occurring in the county, and it is perceived that that may be attributed to people who do not have residential garbage service. Additionally, there have been an abundance of issues without having mandatory waste collections for some households, again, which can be contributing to people getting rid of their waste illegally. There are some other thoughts that were asked to be considered, should the code be modified, which is to ensure that there is a mandatory provision of curbside recycling that is supposed to be within our code but has not been enforced. There's, there are a number of residents who express support for maintaining side door or back door service, or asking for other providers to provide that. There has been a request to have a mandatory offer of bulk item pickup for garbage service, as you've seen some bulk items be littered on the sides of the roads or in vacant, vacant lots in our communities. There has also been support to have yard waste trimming service within the county. These are some of the issues amongst others, including issues with our recycling services and not having enough recycling drop box locations across the county, and we thought we could finally come together and try to address these issues that I know for prior boards that I've served on, we've been trying to address for years without any activity moving forward to provide that in a form of a code. Nonetheless, with that being stated, there is still a lot more work to be done, as has been recognized, and we do look forward to tabling this and, again, working with our service providers so that we can address the myriad of issues that I just shared with you. With that, I'm going to ask each commissioner if they would like to weigh in on this matter, and I perceive that one will be putting forward a motion for us to pull this for later consideration.
I think you covered most of the comments there. We're, for those that are listening that have reached out to us about complaints and issues that they want to have addressed, you know, we do hear you. We do understand that tabling this doesn't necessarily solve the things that have been brought forward, but I hope that there is an encouragement, that the right kind of dialogue is happening in order to solve those issues. Certainly, I'm in favor of not moving forward with the current proposal, and, you know, I do want to hear, I know many of you have probably arrived here to share your thoughts on the, on this particular issue as well, so I do want to hear that, but I am in favor of continuing with the right dialogue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Broun?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To date, as of this morning, we have received seven hundred, seventeen-hundred-and-fifteen emails in opposition of the proposed code for Section One-O-two. And two of those have been in support, only two out of seven hundred, seventeen-hundred-and-fifteen. So I think we've heard, heard the public loud and clear. However, I would like to say that, first of all, this should have never been brought forward without being presented to the board and discussion with the haulers and the public. Thank you, Bud. Let me finish. So I, I think we need to have more meetings. The haulers have an attorney that they have hired to have fruitful discussions and come together to take care of those citizens that can't get service on their cul-de-sac, or where the big trucks can't go in a, in a narrow street, and I think they can work together with staff to accommodate them. So I am for tabling this, Section One-O-two, all together today, and let the meetings, let the haulers and staff work it out together. I don't know that we need an ordinance or code to address this at this time. I think they can do their own, come to an agreement amongst themselves with all the haulers. I do think our Environmental Division, Solid Waste, needs to make sure that anyone that is picking up garbage or trash in, or recycling in Cobb County are permitted and wrecked, and, because a lot of the junk haulers didn't even know they had to be permitted to pick up garbage. So I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done, but I would support tabling this today, the whole Section One-O-two, and let's see what they come up with as, as working together with more meetings, maybe public input as well, and see if with more meetings, maybe public input as well, and see if it even needs to come back to address as an ordinance. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am in favor of tabling the amendment and we did receive an overwhelming number of emails. And I believe it was on August 23rd that we had the hearing. So of the 1,700 emails, I'm willing to submit that maybe we received possibly 700 before the meeting on the 23rd where we publicly announced as a board that we did not support the proposed amendment. So based on that math, we probably received well over 1,000 emails after this board publicly announced that it did not support the proposed code. I only ask of the public that when we have scenarios such as this, that we take a little time to update ourselves on the board's opinions, our thoughts and our comments, which are recorded for public consumption. But instead, what happened here, and I completely understand the concern, but what happened here, it seemed like there was just this train going without little regard to what the board actually felt. There was a huge assumption that because it's in the book, the board supported this. So, you know, while there was a firestorm to keep this going, I don't know that there were any that were familiar or understood the board's position that worked as feverishly to disseminate information that the board was not in support of this. So I just ask that as we move forward, that you make an effort to update yourselves on the board's opinion. It's already been said that when we have amendments such as these, we would appreciate as the board, if it comes to us first, before it's publicly shared. And if the board so chooses at that point to have a public hearing for the public to weigh in, then we will make that decision moving forward as a board. I think it's great that we were able to meet with the haulers and address some of the concerns. So while I understand that there is an overwhelming number of residents that are satisfied with their services, and that's fantastic, and I too am satisfied with my current hauler, there are people that are having issues. There are residents that are having issues with trash and it's our responsibility as a board to correct those issues, just like any other issue that comes before us that's shared during public comment. We are expected to address those issues. So I just want people to be mindful that as we move forward and make decisions as a board, we are making decisions for everybody. Even if you're not impacted by this particular issue, please understand that there are people that are impacted and it's our responsibility as a Board of Commissioner to address those concerns. So with that, Madam Chair, I do support tabling this and I look forward to future conversations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have we resolved the technical issues with Commissioner Gamble?
I think we can hear her.
Okay, thank you. If you can have her also weigh in on this matter before we vote on it, that would be helpful in moving this discussion forward.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Commissioner, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I support the comments put forth by Commissioner Burrell. We have had an overwhelming influx of community input on this. I do look forward to tabling this request, but more importantly, working with the haulers because even the issues that the chair noted, these are all things that I think can be solved by the haulers without the county's interference.
Thank you, Commissioner. Was there additional comment, Commissioner Burrell? Did you have another comment?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, thank you. With that, again, I just want to underscore the comments that Commissioner Sheffield shared. This is a public health matter when we have residents who are not receiving service when it comes to sanitation and that is what pulls the board in to address this issue. We certainly understand there is a private market that works in this space and that has been doing a great job for most of our residents. However, for the few that, again, lack service, there has not been a prod within the private market to address those issues until this code amendment came forward. And so, again, there is a role for us to play in addressing this public health matter and there is also state statute support for local governments addressing this service issue within the array of services that they provide. That doesn't necessarily mean we have any interest in providing this service solely, but it is an interest that does not supersede our role as a Board of Commissioners to be able to address a public health sanitation issue that has been brewing in our county for several years. So with that, I'm going to move that we table this amendment until our next code amendment cycle. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Will that be in next year?
It will be next year.
Okay. Can we not wait and see? Does it have to have a date that was going to come back? I think it needs to be removed completely today. And after meetings with the haulers and the public, if it needs to come back, we can bring it back in next year in January, February code amendments. But we are undergoing a unified development code for the whole package, so I think this needs to be removed completely today and we can discuss bringing it back at a later time, if it needs to.
I know Commissioner Richardson would like to weigh in and I'll share the same sentiment that I shared at our work session on the 23rd and I reiterated when we met with the haulers. The Board of Commissioners in many iterations of boards have had multiple work sessions to address the issues that we've had with sanitation and recycling with no action taken over those years. If we continue to table this without a date certain for reconsideration, all we do is kick this can down the road and it evolves into another issue. As I shared during the work session, it may not have been appropriate for us to move forward with this code today, but at least moving forward with it in the manner that we did and putting it in the code amendment package is at least prompting the most robust discussion towards us resolving the many issues that we've had, again, over several cycles of boards which you and I have both served on. And so I would ask for this board to move, at least if we were to delay this or table this, that we table, excuse me, I'm not having a dialogue with anyone in the audience, and I will ask for those that are here to help keep ordering here to please do so. I will ask that this be tabled to our next amendment cycle so that we can ensure that there is constructive conversation with respect to this. I am appreciative of the communications that we've had with haulers. We've had two meetings since our last work session. There need to be many more meetings and if we don't put up a date certain, there is nothing even driving us to continue to work together and status quo may be simply what we go back to. And it's easy to just say no because that is status quo and that's the easiest thing, the easiest thing to do, especially in the face of opposition. But I am certain that we need to be able to address the myriad of issues our citizens have brought to us.
May I respond?
I'm going to let Commissioner Richardson speak. Yes, because I feel as though this conversation is slightly moot and I'll, you know, kind of look at our county attorney because even taking this vote is not a part of the normal process. We've added this to assure the community, again, that we're not in interest of what's been proposed and that itself is a political maneuver to show something, not exactly something a part of our process. So now we're trying to add another part of the process where tabling does not require something to, it doesn't force code to be reconsidered. It doesn't force code to be reconsidered, it just says, we're not doing it today, we're not looking at it. But in terms of the conversations, they get to continue. This is every, we're kind of digging into this beyond what the normal, the process would just be that we wouldn't vote on this, we wouldn't include this as a part of our approval. Now we're taking a formal vote to say we don't want to include it and now we're asking to take a formal vote to remove it from what? Like we can't remove 102 from the code. We're out of, I feel like we're out of process by pushing this further and further.
Commissioner Richardson, I respectfully disagree. The code is presented to you before you today for you to be able to consider. The motion that stands before you is not to consider it today, but also to bring it back during the next code amendment process. That's the current motion that's before you.
So is it?
It has been seconded.
So is it to bring back the proposal or is it to bring back opening that section of the code?
As I understood, the motion is to bring back, have staff work on it and to bring back a new formulation and working with the haulers and also the public during that process.
And that's kind of my interpretation, but is this, has this, is this a normal procedure?
Yes, it can be, yes. Especially when it's contentious and there isn't clear direction. Staff needs a direction on what they're supposed to do and this gives the staff that direction.
Right. I mean, I know that's what we agreed to yesterday was to take a vote on this for that purpose, but. Commissioner Burrell and then Commissioner Sheffield.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, we have had several code amendments, purpose-built student housing that took several years, at least two years or more. We had a task force formed, a committee that visited all the codes and worked with staff before it ever went public. And this has created a firestorm, although we've had complaints. Initially, when we had all these complaints, the haulers that are out there now that people are wanting to keep, we didn't have the number we do that have surfaced now and or weren't able to service in certain areas. But after our meeting on the 31st, I think it's evident that the haulers are working together and we've had haulers come forward and say they could service these small areas, cul-de-sacs and where people were not getting service before. There are haulers that provide backdoor service or for elderly and people who can't manage that way, so with curbside. The code that's presented today not only has the one hauler per district that we don't all agree on, but there are other things in there like mandatory recycling that we don't need to be dictating to these, the haulers. They need to work that out with their customers. So I don't, I think it needs to be tabled today and have these meetings, form a committee or a task force to address this with the haulers and with staff and see where we need to go in January or February. I don't want to keep answering 1,715 emails and I have been responding to all of them with the public hearing dates, that none of us agreed on the one hauler per district. How many in the audience have received an email response from me? Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, with the request to hold this into a later date, if I can just have clarification on what that later date is and what is the difference between January of next year and this proposed later date? When is this later date? Is it a year from now? Is it June of next year? I'm just trying to get a little clarification.
Thank you, Commissioner. We typically have a code amendment package brought before us in January, but I did not want to provide a date certain from some conversation I had. It may not come forward at the specific time that it does and so just to avoid that, I just said, when we have our next code amendment package, which will likely be in January of next year.
Right. But as a follow-up with Commissioner Burrell, if I may ask, what date did you have in mind? You said just to get rid of it and bring it back at a later date. I'm just trying to, so you're not wanting to bring it back at all?
Not if it's not necessary. All the meetings and the conversations that they're going to be having in town halls with the public if we need to, or form a task force to research it.
Well, Madam Chair, again, I support us tabling this and coming to a solution. I do believe that in spite of the 1,750 emails, it's still our responsibility to address it. So, you know, we can work amongst the board, with our county manager, with Dr. Jenkins, the haulers have public hearings, but we need to move forward on a solution and that's all I have.
Thank you. Again, Commissioner Burrell acknowledging, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Gamble, yes, ma'am, please go ahead.
I would like to weigh in on this conversation. Again, I support tabling this and as far as placing a date on for further consideration, I think that also goes back to the work that the county is now doing with the haulers. But if we're going to put a date on this, then we also need to put a date on other departments such as our DOT to bring up these roads that these haulers cannot go down because there's not adequate room for them to turn around. How is the county going to go in and make sure that these roads are compliant to allow the haulers to service them? As far as either having one choice hauler in a subdivision or multiple haulers in a subdivision, is the county now going to start overseeing covenants that are set up by HOAs? We have in our current code that the county does not enforce covenants, yet if we are going to start looking at one hauler or multiple haulers and addressing that, that means we are now interfering with HOA covenants. And as far as the, you know, ensuring curbside recycling and stuff or having somebody pick stuff up at their house, again, that is a hauler's choice on what kind of service they want. That is, I don't think, again, something the county should be dictating in that regard. So if we are going to be putting a date that this is going to be coming back, then we also need to have a date for other issues that are the county's responsibility to be addressed as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. I understand that a lot of the issues that you shared and Commissioner Burrell shared and that I've shared are part of the discussions that are taking place with the haulers and I think we are in less a position to come up with a date certain to address those issues as those are being discussed as we are to at least say, let's table this until our next code amendment cycle. That at least, again, provides a push for us to continue speaking. And so with that, commissioners, we've had discussion, we've had a motion in a second. I'll go ahead and call the question. Commissioner Gamble?
I support.
Thank you.
I support tabling.
Thank you, Commissioner. The motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Burrell in opposition.
I'm sorry. Can I change my vote because I was voting against bringing it back?
You're voting on the motion?
Which is to bring it back at a later date.
Right.
But I support tabling it.
I think you can explain that to the crowd.
Okay. That's my vote.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. Commissioner Sheffield has another obligation that she must get to, actually a plane that she must catch. Thank you for sticking with us for this long this morning. We will go ahead and open up the public hearing. The public hearing is open for anyone from the public to address any of the amendments that have been proposed. We'll have an unlimited number of speakers for a maximum of three minutes apiece and we will have Ms. Coleman, who's been very patient with us, go ahead and kick us off.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm so glad I came because you explained some things that I had questions about. And the reason I'm here first and foremost is because your name was just being text continuously on Nextdoor. I love my neighbors. And I'm well informed about how they feel. And 100% of them said, no, we want to choose our own trash collectors. However, me sitting here patiently listening to you, Madam Chair, and the other commissioners on the board, I now see that other residents are having problems that I wasn't even aware of. Sometimes we're so selfish, it's all about us, me, me, me. And I'm here because I like the trash collector that I have now, which is Trash Taxi. I lived for 22 years in Cobb County, the unincorporated section. And when I bought my home in September of 2000, I wasn't aware that I would have to hire a company to remove my trash. But I was always serviced by a city. I lived in Alpharetta, and you have no choice. You pay city taxes, and whatever vendor they choose, that's who you use. So I've never had a complaint until now because I want to be able to choose. But I also have to keep in mind what your perspectives were. You want to serve all constituents. You want them to be sure that you hear them. And the majority of us might be satisfied, but what about the ones that aren't? I never thought about the big trucks can get down the cul-de-sacs or little, small streets. It's intelligent to come to these meetings because now I see both perspectives and not just those that are satisfied. So I want to thank you for letting me speak. I'm so happy that the Lord let me come this morning so I could find out for myself just what's going on. I'm sorry I was out of order, but I've never been to a commissioners' meeting. But I will come back again when I want to know what's going on. Thank you so much for a job well done.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Again, as been asked, I clarify that the three minutes that you receive are for all the code amendments, not just for the sanitation ordinance. You are welcome to address any amendment in the package at this time. Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Parksup, a law firm in Samslock and Huff, and I represent the independent haulers of Cobb County. And I won't take all three minutes because of your action previously, but I did want to thank you, Madam Chair, for hosting the meeting on the 31st where we were able to sit at a roundtable meeting and discuss these issues. Also wanted to let you know that Dr. Jenkins hosted us last Friday, September 9th, where we were able to sit down and discuss this. And I appreciate that, and what a hard act to follow, the comments from, from the first speaker, that we need to talk about everybody and the haulers are passionate owners. They are often multi-generational owners. And one thing that I also want to mention is they are also very responsible employers. And so they employ a lot of folks that, that serve and live in Cobb County, so we want to recognize that. We will work with the county. And, Madam Chair, after that meeting on the 31st, you mentioned, let's start with administrative changes that don't have to take the time, don't have to come back before the board. And we're going to start with those administrative changes. And I look at that as communication and coordination. And we have started that dialogue with that meeting last Friday, and we pledge to keep meeting and address the specific complaints. And my organization will work diligently to make sure that everybody has the service that they deserve. I know that the county hears a complaint and finds that to be very troubling to have a complaint. When my clients hear about a complaint that is someone else in the county, they look at it as potentially an opportunity to provide a service to somebody they're not already serving. So we will look forward to that opportunity. And I appreciate your time and I appreciate your leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Parks.
Sorry. Good morning, Cobb County Chairwoman Ms. Cupid and fellow commissioners. My name is Robin Moody. I live in District 3. My concern is freedom. Less government is always better. While I understand the people of Cobb County's frustrations with our existing trash haulers, thank you for stepping in and sharing some of those with those haulers directly. I appreciate that. But let's be honest, less operating trash companies in Cobb makes for worse service, not better. However, the county stepping in and taking away our freedom to choose which provider we have choices of matters. Previously, I lived in an older neighborhood. We had older people there. They really appreciated having choice. Hughes is one of the operators we had, and they would drive up your driveway and get your trash can for you. If you're old, that matters. Having the ability and freedom to live in your home as long as possible is important in Cobb County, and having choice matters on that one. Let's see. During the previous pandemic, small businesses in Cobb were hurt hard. And I think taking away more opportunities for businesses to thrive matters. So I believe having as many choices matters. Thank you for that. And also, Cobb County is already hurting. We already have enough taxes here. I think we can all agree on that. So having more fees and taxes matters, and we don't want that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Nancy Tilton, and I want to address all the commissioners and Chairwoman Ms. Cupid as well. I'm just here, short and simple, sweet to say that I have lived in Cobb County, unincorporated Cobb County, since 1984. I moved here for the reasons of being able to pick my own trash service, internet service. I can pick my own gas company. I can choose what I, where I want to shop and who I want to, for services. It's very important to me. I'm a senior, believe it or not, hopefully you don't believe it, but, you know, I'm on a fixed, limited income, and I just can't afford all this added taxes, fees that people want to do. I do have a couple suggestions. One, I understand people complain garbage cans out at different days of the week, subdivisions happens in mine as well. Maybe you could just divide the county into so many sections and have them a certain day of the week. All haulers can only go to your district on that day of the week. That means the rest of the county would never have any haulers anywhere in their subdivisions. I know there's a timeframe for them to put the trash out and have it removed, the cans out in the street. That doesn't happen in my subdivision at all. And I wish you would make part of the code that when it's not out for pickup, you must have it out of sight of being on the street. I don't want to see your garbage cans in your driveway. Put them in your garage, or put them behind your fence, or behind your house. I don't want to see it. I was in the mortgage business 45 years. That doesn't help the value of anybody's houses, so that I'd consider. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
I'll start with addressing tabling versus removing because I think that is a very important point. This amendment isn't ready for game time. It's far from ready for game time. And one thing I noticed throughout the entire presentation on all of the amendments is government overreach. And when we have a government that thinks that they can dictate the services we use when they can't even mow the grass in the right of ways, that's a problem. When we have a government who is getting ready to remove all of the codes for the zoning, in my opinion, that's government overreach. It opens a gate you won't be able to close. When you start dictating short-term rentals requiring occupancy certifications per rental, if it's an Airbnb, that's government overreach. When you have a commissioner sitting here telling the people that we didn't understand before we started complaining where you all sat, I think it was real clear where a couple of you sat. You didn't do your due diligence before this came to the work session. So I just ask that you remember, limited government is always better. Looking for revenue sources shouldn't be on the backs of us. Cut spending if you need more revenue. Thank you.
I live in unincorporated Cobb County District 1, just south of Kennesaw. I came today with a whole page full of stuff, but after hearing the tabling motion, I'm cutting that in half. I would like to talk about three, two, two items with a third comment. The first item is about curbside recycling and forcing haulers to do that. You know, my family recycles, but we don't have curbside recycling. Cobb County has a recycling center. It's open to anybody, and it's free. And my concern about curbside recycling is that it's usually single-stream. And we know that single-stream doesn't work. Single-stream doesn't work because most of us don't know what we can and cannot recycle, or how to prepare our recycling. You know, that drink bottle with the shrink wrap on the outside and the cap on the top? There are things you have to do to make that a recyclable product. If it shows up at the recycling center that way, it goes in the landfill. If you decide to do some kind of mandatory recycling, I insist that you include in that provision serious education on what recycling needs to look like and how to do it properly. I would expect the Marietta Daily Journal, I'm calling on you, to do another story about recycling at the county facility. Show people where it is on a map. Tell them, take pictures, show them how to do it. TV and radio, Marietta Daily Journal doesn't cover everybody. I still get the paper in my mail now instead of delivered, but I still get the paper, but I know I'm one of few. But whatever you do about recycling, education has to be at the top of your list. The other thing I wanted to talk about with this most ill-conceived four-zone bureaucratic plan was that it obviously wasn't based on data. What I heard today and what I've read in the newspaper is, we get years of phone calls. We have such and such a problem. There has been a request for. Anticote is not data. When you get a request, I would expect you to know the address of the person, the date of the call, the hauler for that complaint, and the nature of the complaint. That's data. Data that can be put on a map, data that can be added on a calendar, data that can be graphed by hauler, data that can be graphed by complaint. Then, and only then, will the government be able to do a regulation that is necessary. And if it is necessary, write a narrow, narrowly tailored response to those complaints. And then my comment. I moved to Cobb County in March of 1989, specifically the 1st of March. I have used the Pickensheimer family hauler ever since then, and I would like to take this opportunity, commend them for the great service I've had for all those years.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I am president of East Cobb Civic Association. Each of the Board of Commissioners and the county clerk have been given a copy of the ECCA's recommendations for the record. Section 78-407, Short-Term Rentals, ECCA recommends that the Commissioners hold this code amendment for additional work. As you will see from our submittal, most of our comments on this code remain the same as they were two years ago, as well as from January of 2022, when this was again proposed. ECCA is disappointed that it has not received any feedback from Cobb County as to why these requests have not been included or questions answered. This proposed code contains a great amount of ambiguous language and undefined terms, all of which are subject to interpretation. In addition, the code proposes a short-term rental license. Does a $55 business license cover all the work involved in keeping four county, Cobb County agencies up to date? There are other concerns about the proposed short-term rental code. How will the homestead exemption and senior exemption be handled on the property? Right now, the code only addresses how many square feet per adult is needed to figure out occupancy. What size house would be needed for two adults and a youth sports team? We've already seen this happen in Indian Hills. Two adults show up, they bring 11 people for, for a soccer team. Who will determine and check the maximum occupancy? Who will enforce that the properties are compliant with current dates or current codes? Is there no grandfathering allowed? ECCA recognizes the need for this code. However, work still needs to be done to tighten up the language and address certain specific Section 102-76385, Residential Curbside Collection General Provisions, ECCA recommends denial. We've already gone through this, so I'm not going to go on reading the rest of the recommendations that we had. Article 6, Section 134-192, Summary of Uses. ECCA recommends that the summaries chart be updated, be updated this code amendment cycle. We are old-fashioned. We think that inconsistencies should be corrected when they are found. We have been given several different reasons why this has not been done. This zoning chart is used by the public, and the request to update it was given to the Board of Commissioners and staff in a timely fashion. ECCA-
Sir, I'm sorry. You're three minutes above.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Monica. The Laney District 4 resident with Thriving Riverside Rental Association. I'm here to speak about the ordinance for the multifamily apartment complexes that is being considered to have yearly inspections done. I do want to say that is a move in the right direction, but we're going to have to also consider that you have plenty of properties, many properties, that have over 200, 300 units. And so when you think about, I'm just talking about the Pembroke Cluster, South Cobb Cluster, combined, there's four apartment complexes, right? So I'm just talking about that area. And you have, to do those inspections, just going to have to involve personnel. It's going to have to involve personnel, and it's also going to have to involve follow-up. So if there's a unit that is in need of repair, just a unit that is in need of just more than just superficial issues, is there going to be accurate follow-up to make sure that those conditions are being repaired, right? And then also, you're going to have to have a strong, a strong commitment with property owners to say that, to encourage that leases are not going to not be renewed because you have units that are being reported for issues. Time and time, I'm hearing again from different residents saying to me, the reason why they didn't report something, because they were afraid they're going to be retaliated against. Or in some cases, they reported something because, well, their rent was behind, so they didn't report anything, right? So basically, we are going to need an intentional conversation- have units that are being reported for issues. Time to time, I'm hearing again from different residents saying to me, the reason why they didn't report something, because they were afraid they're going to be retaliated against. Or in some cases, they reported something because, well, their rent was behind, so they didn't report anything, right? So basically, we are going to need intentional conversations, we're going to need intentional teamwork, task force, whatever you want to call it, so that people are not feeling that they're going to be retaliated against if they have to report that repairs have to be done on their homes. Again, if you talk about the Pearl Brook-South Cobb Cluster area, when we have 45 apartment complexes, that's our, that's our youth that live in those homes. And the youth that's living in these homes, they're not living there for those six months, they're not living there for a year. That's their home for the entire duration from when they're going from kindergarten all the way through high school, right? So, so basically, we're going to do our commit to make sure we're going to keep the children safe, because the children are our future. So again, I'm glad that this ordinance is being considered. I'm glad that it's being brought to, in front of you, but we're going to have to do our due diligence and make sure that this is not something to, to drive away businesses. This is not something to deter people from saying, okay, well, I can't move to that property because that property is going to have a lot of issues. It also is going to open up that we are going to have to address this housing crisis that we have in Cobb County. So thank you for allowing me to share.
We want, we all want everyone to have good trash service, but the only thing that the proposal of solid waste code change did was to prove that the county isn't the right entity to make that happen. Where was the responsible adult in the county leadership to step in and say, this is so bad it can't go to the board? We can't go to the board with such drastic changes without having more than three minutes of public input. We need town halls. Cobb leadership's tainted itself by bypassing the public and the industry. It was especially cruel to the false small family business owners who had the fear of their livelihood and years of hard work being stolen away just having it sprung on them. This proposal would have saddled all of us with the very problem that the county purported to solve for a fee, of course. Now, the chair was quick to say that the fee isn't, but she never said what the fee is. She never told people that a fee is written into the proposal. This is why people don't trust the government. It's that behavior that this trash proposal has caused for new cityhoods. I want to thank Commissioner Gamble and Burrell for taking a firm stand, not waffling around with, well, it's not for, for zones or not, for taking a firm stand that this is ready. And for taking the time to see if we even need a zone when we work with the haulers. It's time to, it's time that this be removed entirely. It will do far more harm than it will ever do good. Just ask Gwinnett County, who did it 10 years ago, and had to pay 80 million in damages for haulers for stealing their business. Today, Gwinnett is clamoring for a stick to beat its haulers up while their haulers call Cobb County haulers for help. A new stick isn't going to work for Gwinnett or our Cobb. Let's move to something that can work. Create a win-win partnership with our haulers community and our county. You have given the haulers input in two meetings, and, and, two meetings, give them time to work solutions, so there will be some time, some will be hard, some will be easy. Cobb Trash Haulers should set up a common website for all Cobb Trash Haulers to handle complaints. Complaints can be automatically forwarded to the hauler manager so that visibility the Cobb haulers as an industry can have visibility to jointly work on complaints such as lack of service. If Cobb County gets a complaint, the county can even refer citizens to the website. Real data can be captured and metrics for improvement is established. That will make it better. That's how you know if you actually need a code. One last thing, Grandetti said, when the crap starts flowing downstream, get out of the creek. Don't stand there in the creek and make excuses hoping it'll pass. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Claudia Werner. I have been resident of Cobb County for the last 22 years. Thank you for hearing me. I, I really think as a community, we should try to drive and go forward. I think the idea of, I invite all the haulers and all the people who work in trash and all the community to try to recycle and to try to improve. Cobb County can progress, is very good in several areas, and I think that the idea to put this is to put it on the table and work in solutions. Then I think, I, I think we should go in that way. And also, I want to, one time I received something about e-energy, some kind of bags that they wanted for recycled plastic. That is not exactly for this, but I want to mention that, they mentioned about something like return the plastic. When I reviewed, it was incineration, and that can cause problems in the, in there. Then if something like that comes, be very careful. We don't want contamination in there. Thank you for your work.
My name's James, Jamie McCrery. I'm a resident of the Weatherstone Community here in Cobb County, and I'm here to speak to the Chapter 78 Code Amendments concerning short-term rentals. We have very strong opinions on short-term rentals and residential neighborhoods as a whole. I'm going to separate out those personal impacts and neighbor impacts to the public comments and address just the items pertinent to the code on the books right now. So as mentioned, mentioned earlier, I think one of the biggest things, while I'm happy to see the enforcement listed and the purpose listed in this Section 78 code for short-term rentals, it lacks definition in the transport layer of how to get to that enforcement. Examples were that owners or agents' best efforts are the guidelines to make occupants, make sure that occupants do not disrupt the neighborhood. So what defines best efforts? Is that to be their opinion? Our opinion is the burden on the offended neighbor to make that, that judgment? We don't know. Document states that the owner and the rental agent are responsible for monitoring their own property to make sure they remain in compliance with zoning, building, health, safety code, and provisions. It sounds very fox and hen house. I mean, in my opinion, they're always going to be in compliance if they're the ones that get to say whether they're in compliance or not. Will there be any auditing or third-party inspection of this? There is a section mandating notification of occupancy limits in off-street parking. That's very good. As noted earlier, how will we enforce that owners operate within these occupancy guidelines and do not exceed their occupancy limits? As well as is there any control for the inevitable street parking and all of the congestion that it brings with it? Lastly, how will you address all of the concerns for disrupting the safety baselines of the residential neighborhood when introducing the variables of transient lodging? Especially if you are allowing an occupant of every 390 square feet for the establishment next door to me, which I have the vested interest in, at 5,500 square feet, we could potentially have 14 transient occupants and all of the neighborhood baseline variables that come with them, security, noise, traffic, in a given night, exponentially as they invite their friends. And in that respect, I'd like to see some provision, some control that differentiates between families that are just trying to make a little additional income to get by and make ends meet versus people setting up transient hoteling systems and just coming in and setting up mass, mass hoteling within a residential neighborhood. I'll address the rest of my comments in the public, public comments speaking, but thank you for your time.
Chairwoman Cupid, Board of Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to provide a public comment on these proposed 2022 code amendments. My name is Joseph Santoro. I'm with the Council for Quality Growth. We are a nonprofit trade association representing a development industry, and that's your architects, attorneys, contractors, developers, engineers, and financial executives, financial executives with a vested interest in quality development growth, both in Metro Atlanta and here in the county, here in Cobb County. We have solicited feedback from, from our membership on the impact that these code amendment proposals would have on quality growth here in the county. And as Cobb County continues to work on these code amendment changes between now and the next public hearing, we respectfully request, consider two of our initial comments and recommendations, hopefully received our letter yesterday evening. The first one is regarding Chapter 110, the subdivision design standards and required improvements. So on page two of that, Chapter 110, relating to the private streets and new developments, where it reads, "Private streets must be serviced with the same type of materials that are used in the Cobb County Department of Transportation for the servicing and resurfacing of private trees." We recommend further dialogue with the development industry, you know, given that private streets are already currently adopted in the Cobb County Development Standards and with the county creating, and in the process of creating a unified development code, we feel there needs to be more conversation on this particular code amendment. And then our next initial recommendation would be regarding Chapter 134, zoning. That's the rezoning and land use permit application section. So on p, page three of Chapter 134, relating to the traffic impact study requirements, the newly added language that requires the traffic impact study to be completed at least 30 days prior to a planning commission hearing, we feel is aggressive in comparison to other counties in the region that we represent. And for reference, you know, I think, you know, we always talk about the permitting process, the timeline, and just for the reference for the Board of Commissioners, it generally takes about two months to generate a traffic impact study, and with this particular, particular 30-day additional requirement, it'd be at least a minimum of three months before being in front of a planning commission hearing. Now, we do understand that staff, as well as the planning commission, need time in order to review and understand what is being presented in front of them. However, you know, I think we feel, you know, as Cobb County does not currently have any particular timeframe on these particular demanding the traffic impact study prior to the planning commission hearing, and to be more comparable to what we are seeing here in the region, we would recommend reducing that requirement to at least 15 days prior to a planning commission hearing. The Council for Quality Growth continues to stand ready to be a resource for the Cobb County Board of Commissioners staff and look forward to continuing to work with, with everyone on these code amendment changes. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing, for opening this hearing. My name is Catherine Mahoney. I am a 30-year resident of Cobb County. I've lived in the same home. I am here today because I did research and I did understand the positions of each of the board members on the issue of the solid waste code changes. And I was very, very concerned, because from what I read, it clearly indicated that there was going to be something pushed through regardless of what the constituents of the county wished to have done. And I thank you, Commissioner Cupid, for enumerating the issues that you have heard about, because in all that long list that you gave, many of those, most of those, I don't believe will be addressed with the proposal that's even on the table. And I appreciate your desire to push forward and not let things fall to the floor and get the kicked-up can down the road. However, I don't think you are still hearing the constituency in that what is being proposed right now is not meeting any of those needs. And I applaud Commissioner Burrell asking for us to table, because what is on the table right now to be considered is not appropriate. It's not going to solve anybody's problem. And I welcome this notion that we have meetings going on and that, hey, you, if you want people to come and help work through problems, just say the word to, to the people of this county, and we will come and we will help. Because we want everyone to have trash picked up, we want everyone to be living in a safe environment and not have garbage piled up everywhere. But I feel the approach that is being used here is to get something else on the books and not really answer the issues at hand. And I just don't really understand what that issue might be. I can, I can make guesses, but I don't feel you're still listening and hearing the constituency here, because we would like a solution that matches and solves for the problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for all the service that you guys do, and thank you so much for the opportunity to meet on August 31st, and then again, last Friday, Dr. Jenkins and Kimberly with their departments. It's, it's very productive.
Thank you. Please state your name for the.
I'm sorry. I apologize. My name's Brian Warren, and I'm with Custom Disposal Service, and I'm also representing the Independent Haulers Association of Cobb County. Our association is, has been dormant for quite a while, so we're trying to revive it. We have right now somebody working with us to help us set up new bylaws and, and dues structures and whatnot. We are looking forward to working with the county, the commissioners, and the Sustainability, Waste and Beautification Department, as well as Keep Cobb Beautiful Department. We have worked with Kimberly in the past with the Hefty Energy Program. I have a long relationship with Dr. Jenkins, probably going back 20 years. We've been in business for 37 years, our company. My father-in-law started it in 1984. He's 83 years old now, and he's out delivering garbage cans today. My two daughters are out of college, and they now work for the company. So it's a third generation running the company now, and we have 55 team members that, that go to work every day to service approximately 18,000 accounts in Cobb County. We are diversified now and service other areas in the metro area, but, but Cobb County is about 75% of our business. There are companies here today that Cobb County represents 100% of their business. So of course, you know, the proposed ordinance change would devastate them, but I don't want to spend too much time on that. Thank you so much for tabling this for further review. Dr. Jenkins asked me, what's a reasonable amount of time to come together with some solutions to present to the Commissioners? And with my experience in the past on serving on a solid waste planning committee for a city in our vicinity, we went for six months to propose new regulations for that new city that they had to present to the state. So I think if we can meet once a month, and then also in between our meetings, perform certain actions moving forward, I think, I think within a six-month period, we might can come up with a plan that you guys, I know that, that you want to present to Cobb County residents that say, hey, we heard you, here's what we're going to do moving forward. And, and, and my, my biggest hope is, is that Cobb County can come up with a solution that everybody else would want to emulate, and, and we don't need to try to emulate other counties with, with their failed programs. We do currently have a person in our association who actually services one of the zones in Gwinnett County, and so he has a lot of insight, and he knows exactly what's going on there. His company services them.
I'm sorry, sir, you're, you're three minutes.
Okay. Anyway, I look forward to further discussion on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just let all the speakers know, there is a timer on the podium, so you're able to watch your time.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Randy Bobo. I want to thank you for your consideration and work on the short-term rental, along with Jessica and her team. I do agree, it still has a couple of items that are of concern, especially the occupancy limits for kids. We too have issues where two adults will show up and a busload of kids show up. You end up with 20 to 25 people running around the property. We, we spend many a sleepless night because of the property that is adjacent to our home with parties going on all night long, cars coming and going, yelling and screaming. So if the current language is the best that we can come up with, please approve it. Hopefully, between now and the next meeting, you'll consider some additional language to deal with the occupancy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Orth. I'm a resident of Cobb County since 1974, and had a short stint in Tennessee, moved back here in 1989. And we have had a small hauler, was bought out by Hughes Disposal, and so I've been with Hughes for over 30 years. And, you know, they might have an issue every now and then. I don't call and complain about everything. I know a lot of people do, and sometimes the government listens to the people yelling loud sometimes. It may not even be justified. But anyhow, Mr. Jenkins and the County Department made a reference to Gwinnett County, I believe, and it was supposed to be a fantastic program. But anyhow, if you get the. But anyhow, if you get the AJC, they had a nice article in there about the Gwinnett situation. And over there, they have trash bills with the annual fee of $239, and they're going to increase that $16 from last year. And we don't have, at least not a direct tax now for trash hauling, which I appreciate that. And do not see how the government or the county dictating a trash hauler for four districts. I don't know how you guys came up with that, but I think it's a flawed thinking. There's lots of other ways to go around this situation, and, but it's not for government overreach, and I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners and staff. My name is Ray Thomas, and I'm the President of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. This morning, I'm here to talk about short-term rentals. But before I get to short-term rentals, I just want to say briefly, congratulations on the renewal of your AAA rating, and thank you for your stewardship of this county. We certainly appreciate it. All right, short-term rentals. In Mableton, or in the Mableton Improvement Coalition, we have a network of HOAs. This is an issue we have been talking about for several years now, and so we're glad to see that the county is attempting to address it. We support the, the proposed ordinance in principle. However, there are a few things, a few tweaks that we'd like to suggest, and also have a few questions I'd like to ask as well for contemplation when you're, when you're reviewing your, whether you're going to prove it or not. The first item, the grant and denial of application. Right now, the ordinance says that the county has 30 days to respond once they get the all the paperwork. I think we should, we recommend that we reduce that from, from 30 days to 10 or 15 days. We don't see why the county needs 30 days to make, make an approval after it receives all the paperwork. Occupancy, this is probably our biggest concern. The occupancy right now, the way it's written, is based upon square footage. Now, for those who are in the real estate business, it is hard to determine what is a square footage of property. When you look at tax records versus real estate listings, the, the square footage is always seems to be, or oftentimes seems to be different. And so I, we're recommending that we simplify, instead of going by square footage, that we simplify the, this, this requirement to, to two people per bedroom plus three additional people. It's easy to determine how many bedrooms are in a resident, and, a residence, rather, and this is, would seem to be a much more consistent recommendation with surrounding areas and, and counties and municipalities. All right, as far as questions are concerned, we've got several questions. The county currently does not have enough code enforcement agents to handle and follow up on existing complaints. I think many of you all would, would agree with that. So what is the plan to beef of code enforcement staffing to manage this additional burden? Because the 55-
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Sorry, your three minutes are up.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer. I'm also with the Mableton Improvement Coalition. We wholeheartedly support the multifamily inspections proposal. We would suggest that you specify that the penalties, the fines, be per unit and not per building or per property. It's a huge difference. And we do not want the fine to become just a cost of doing business. We also wholeheartedly support the zoning change to the weed control ordinance, and during the work session, I believe there was some, some discussion about an exemption for agricultural uses regardless of the zoning. That seems to us to also be a very reasonable and important change to make to that proposal. Also in the zoning section is a, are some changes related to light and heavy, light and heavy automobile repair that limits the number of vehicles that can be parked on the property overnight. We wholeheartedly support that and encourage not only its adoption, but its, its enforcement. We have so many car repair places in our community that have essentially morphed from auto repair to auto storage. There are dozens, if not hundreds, of cars parked on the property. And in your code, auto storage requires a special land use permit, and these properties do not have that. Also, following on with short-term rentals, we would ask that the, there be some clarification as to how enforcement and complaints are handled. There's language in the, in the proposal now that references a neighbor with a complaint attempting to resolve the complaint before making a complaint to the county. We think that is not ever a good idea. Certainly, code enforcement now does not encourage neighbors to try to resolve complaints. It can lead to, to bad feelings among neighbors at, at a minimum and perhaps a dangerous situation at the maximum. So please, let's not suggest that that's the right approach. The language also in that same section that has to do with how complaints are made to code enforcement does not parallel how complaints are made on other code sections to code enforcement. And so I would simply suggest that you either remove the language that, that talks about emailing or telephoning or writing a letter, and simply say, complain to code enforcement so that the existing procedures can be followed, or else spell out all the ways in which code enforcement complaints can be filed. So thank you very much. Thank you for addressing these issues, and, and please take advantage of every opportunity to work with the community, be it the business community, civic associations, or residents as these, as these ideas are coming up so that we can have, have the most robust proposal to propose for public comment. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Janice Snipes. I've lived in East Cobb since 1980. I'm one of those fortunate people who is very happy with my trash service, and I appreciate the Commission's stance that y'all, all decided that you don't like the zone approach with one hauler, and I do appreciate that. I think that one thing, I agree with the lady in the melon-colored shirt, that one thing that's frustrating to us with this whole process is that it seems like with the code proposal and the issue of whether that's tabled or not, is it sort of a cart before the horse. Although I don't have a problem, I appreciate the people who do have problems with theirs, and I appreciate all the efforts to solve the problems. But let's figure out the solutions to the problems and then see what code changes need to be made, instead of having this set of code changes and seeing whether it fits the problem. Solve the problem and then figure out what code changes need to be made. I think that's what a lot of people were opposed to, is this vast list of complicated code changes that don't seem to us to fix any of the problems. Find out what the solutions are and then make the code changes.
Good morning. My name's Craig Harfoot. I think you should table the whole unified code amendment package. There's been way too much focus on just trash. There's so much stuff in there that's wrong. You need to go line by line. You should have a public hearing, line by line, because, first of all, the problem you have with trash haulers can't get down some streets, that was done when somebody zoned something. St. Leon, across from where I live, fire trucks can't go down those streets because they let them make them too narrow, and they made a HOA. And a house actually burned to the ground because they had to fight it from Surrey Lane, and it was near the corner, but the house went down. I think they're actually finally building another one in his place, one they bought it and kept a lot a while. But anyhow, moving forward, I can't remember her name, but the lady that spoke about recycling. Recycling, she pointed out brilliantly what the problem is. You, you can't mix plastics. You can't recycle them unless you've got the same kind of plastics. You can't put Styrofoam with, oh, the, I can't think of it, you know. Anyhow, there's pellets that come in bulk into the city, and they turn them into bags and parts for cars and bumpers, and you can't mix certain plastics. So you, you actually need to set up, the county does, not the haulers. Just a place, if somebody wants to, really cares about the environment to recycle, you put a place for aluminum cans, you put a place for certain plastics, and it's all educational. I mean, just sticking out on the curb in a bucket, they're, they're right. It's all going to the landfill. And, and when I heard these discussions at that meeting, one of my neighbors said he wanted to recycle, and they were told, yeah, it'll cost you more because it does cost more. You gotta send two trucks. And then, so given that option, did he want to pay more? And he goes, no, let it go to the landfill. So there's even better solutions than that. It's about, you, you know, do you actually need to buy water in bottles, or can you buy a pitcher? These are personal choices. And you can eliminate plastic bottles. You can make Kool-Aid again, you can buy concentrates. I mean, in the whole industry, the last time gas spiked, they made concentrated dishwashing thing because it costs more to haul water. You don't want to haul water, and then you gotta get rid of the packaging. So, I mean, there's more to this, but the, the county actually needs to build these roads-
Thank you, sir. Your time is run. Thank you.
So the trucks can go down.
I want to make sure it's still morning. Christine Rosman, Marietta, and thank you, Chairwoman and Commissioners. I actually live in City of Marietta, so the trash doesn't directly impact me, but what does directly impact me and concern me is the government overreach and the process or lack of process that was used to put this forward. And I think it's also a huge day for Cobb County. It's huge. 1,750 emails. That's an engaged community. That's a community that works together. You had meetings with the haulers. The haulers are willing to work with one another. They want to come to a solution. So given the opportunity, people, and, and trash is a nonpartisan issue, and if you make your decision of who you want your hauler to be, it doesn't matter. It's like you get to, we live in a republic still, you still get to make that decision. It's a beautiful day for Cobb County. And I appreciate the hard work that was done with responding to all those emails. So basically, we had 99.886% of the people saying, hey, we want to take care of this. We're going to work this out. And then you had .114% say, hey, we need your assistance. So this is a community that's willing to work together, and I think it is, it is huge. Also is that last month, we were talking about, and this ties into it, is that at a, when the staff is down by 40%, bringing on a whole new task and a whole new code and everything else and expanding on it requires more staff. So on one hand, you're saying you don't have enough staff, and then that's going to increase it, so how, how would we respond to that? How would that be responded to? So I, again, I don't know if all this was thought out. And also is, I just want to say, I'm actually going to finish this up now. This was an opportunity for our community to come together because I think when people realize what the Unified Development Code and what that's going to look like and how that's going to impact them, this was a perfect entree into getting the community involved and wanting to work. And I appreciate Commissioner Gambrell and Commissioner Burrell for your steering it the way that you have been. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Terry Olonecheck Boyce, and I live in Dorma Estates, which is off of Bell's Ferry Road. We have trash taxi, and we love them. Thank you so much. We, for the time today, I'm just going to probably repeat what everyone else said, but what I wanted to put across is that I do appreciate, I've lived here since 1985, and I appreciate the efforts that you're going through to try to keep Cobb County a beautiful place and that we don't have eyesores and washing machines alongside of the road and big, you know, bags of trash in the streets that are dangerous to vehicles. I appreciate that Joanne Burrell, I don't think she meant to just kick it down the road and never have an ending to this. I, I guess I maybe understood something different than what the rest of the people thought. I appreciate that Ms. Gambrell did make the point that the streets have to be wide enough for the vehicles to get through, and as that gentleman mentioned, not just trash, but the emergency vehicles also. So maybe there's something for the DOT to, to address there. And that Cobb County is a big, big area, and you're trying to satisfy all your constituents, and that's a big job. And I'm sorry for the people that are having problems. And that I ask, though, these trash haulers, obviously, you had the meeting, and you gotta give them enough time, though. I think what Joanne was trying to say was maybe, maybe January is just a little bit too soon. I do think that there needs to be a report given, like monthly or whatever, that the trash haulers, their lawyers, working together so that they can give you and keep you abreast of what they're doing to try to, you know, to take care of the situation, and that those people who are elderly or they can't get to their trash and they're not getting picked up at all, that's not fair. And, and that they need to report back and, and have a communication, open line of communication between them and yourselves as to what's going to rectify the situation. I really don't think a county ordinance are, right now, until you give them proper time, at least six months, and with them reporting back to you. I think that would be fair to you, it would be fair to them, and it would be fair to the people who are not being served, and fair to us also, who we can continue to have free market and open, and free choice. So thank you, Commissioner Burrell, for answering my emails. Thank you. And I also want to say, maybe to the disappointment of Ms. Sheffield, that obviously, a lot of us were very educated before we came here today, and it is our public responsibility and our privilege to be able to come here and speak.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. Your, your time's up. Appreciate it. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Yes.
I'll make this quick because I know everybody probably wants to head out. I just wanted to say thank you.
State your name for the record.
Oh, my name is Joseph Lambert. I own a local trash company. I just wanted to thank all the Commissioners, as well as some of the other county staff, for just being available. I know we had a pretty short timeline on this to have discussions. Despite your busy schedules, you all have been willing to talk, whether it be over text, email, or even in person. I also wanted to say, you know, we've discussed a lot with haulers who are doing curbside pickup. My business is a junk business, but we know these issues are serious. We've been listening to them, and we're committed to do whatever we can to help. But I just wanted to thank you for your accessibility and look forward to finding a good solution.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers for this public hearing? With that, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, did you have any comments, feedback for our director? Commissioners, did you have any comments, feedback for our director prior to us going to the next matter? In fact, I will call for us to take a break after this.
Okay, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Gamble. Please, yes, go ahead.
I know we've all suggested some changes to Jessica and the other departments as far as the proposed code amendments. When are we going to know if those suggestions are going to be incorporated into the code, and when will that be released?
Jessica's approaching now to respond.
Yes, Commissioner, that will be in the, in your agenda packet when you receive it. And of course, at that time, it'll also be publicly available, both on the agenda packet online, as well as we'll post it on our website where the code amendments currently live, again, with an outline showing what changes have been made since the first public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, write your name.
Just one, so earlier, it was stated, of course, about the definitions being duplicative for the zoning definitions.
Correct.
If a resident were to try to find those definitions, where could they find that?
And the section that pertains to each district, for instance, if you look at the section that spells out the regulations for R twenty, the first paragraph in there is the purpose and intent, and that describes exactly what the district is. And in most cases, that language is almost identical.
Thank you, Jessica, for a detailed explanation of everything and presentation. I would just like to say thank you to the community for showing up today and for all your support with the seventeen hundred and fifteen or fifty emails that we've received. And I think that there's, this is a good start to discussion that we've had with the haulers, and I think it will continue. And it looks like everybody's ready and willing to resolve the issues that we do have. And I just, you know, our doors are always open if you have questions. And moving forward, I'd just like to see more communication publicly to update our And we can do that through our newsletters, town halls, what have you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. I too want to thank those that participated in today's public hearing and those that took time to find out what the code amendments were and to provide their feedback. I've been taking copious notes here, and I will certainly share that with staff. And we look forward to taking the suggestions back before we have our second hearing. Our second hearing will be at our meeting two weeks from now, and today is the thirteenth, so it'll be September twenty-seventh. It will be a night meeting at seven PM. Again, this particular code section with respect to sanitation, section one oh two has been pulled, so we will not be having that brought before us at that second meeting. But we will have the other matters that are part of this code amendment package considered. With that, I'd like to go ahead and not only close out this public hearing, but close out our meeting before we can take a lunch break. It is now going on to noon. And Commissioners, be honest with me and County Manager, as far as how much time you desire. It's forty-five minutes? Yes. Why don't we just come back? We'll come back at twelve forty-five. Thank you.
Welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting, the September thirteenth of two thousand twenty-two. We have wrapped up our public hearing We have wrapped up our public hearings prior to our recess, and we will be modifying today's agenda to move forward with our recommendation for the appointment of the Economic Development Director. That agenda item is Agenda Item 37. With that, I'm going to turn things over to our County Manager. And, excuse me, for those who are viewing this meeting, we do have a quorum, even though you only see two Commissioners on screen. Commissioner Gamble is joining us via audio, and it takes three out of five members to constitute a quorum for us to address business matters.
Thank you, Chairwoman Commissioners. It is my pleasure, my honor, to recommend to you our new Economic Development Director, Sabrina Young-Wright. Sabrina comes with an enormous amount of director-related economic development experience, including 14 years in working in this space, including the development authorities and local governments, in managing development incentive programs, developing and implementing economic development and redevelopment strategies, plans, and establishing and administering grants. We are so fortunate to have Serena back. Serena has been with us on a previous stint, as well as working with the City of Marietta. So it is my pleasure today to ask the Board to accept my recommendation to appoint as our Economic Development Director, Mrs. Sabrina Young-Wright.
Thank you, Director, or, excuse me, County Manager, and soon-to-be Director of Economic Development. With that, I move that we approve the County Manager's recommendation as she presented. Second, is there any comment or question?
I would just say, I look forward to working with Sabrina again, all of us, and welcome back.
Ditto, definitely. I'll call the question. Commissioner Gamble, if you can let us... I'm sorry? Oh, she's for. Thank you so much. Our motion passes 3-0 with Commissioners Richardson and Commissioner Sheffield not present. So with that, congratulations.
Thank you. I'm so happy and honored to accept this role and to get back to doing the work of economic development in Cobb County. Of course, I grew up in Cobb County. I love Cobb County. I love economic development. And so I am very passionate about economic development, especially seeing projects come to fruition in the county where I grew up and, you know, was, you know, went to Floyd Middle School and Osmond High School and KSU. So, you know, as you can tell from that, I love Cobb County, and I'm just excited to be back at work here, and I look forward to joining you all and seeing some familiar faces, as well as getting to know some of the new colleagues who are on the team now.
Excellent. Thank you. We're happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Commissioners. Appreciate your support.
We're going to get a picture of you, Sabrina, before we... Thank you. We will now go back to our agenda as it has been printed. We, I believe, are at our first public comment, and I'll turn things over to you, Bill.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. When you approach the podium, please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the Chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, or offensive, slanderous. To that end, the Board encourages, regardless of the topic, the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration or Cobb County government. And just as a reminder, there is a timer on the podium for your five minutes. Chairwoman, I'll go through the names, but I do believe some of the people have left, or they already spoke during the public hearing. But I'll just work through the names till we get through the first six. The first one is James McCreary.
All right. Please feel free to approach. And James, you'll have five minutes for public comment, and just help us in restating your full name for the record.
Thank you. My name's James McCreary. I'm here to speak based on short-term rentals. I spoke earlier regarding the addendum on the docket, and I would like to speak to the direct impact of short-term rental has had on us in our neighborhood environment. But I would like to reflect the purpose statement in the addendum, which I liked very much, that it talked about protecting the public health, safety, and general welfare in the individuals and the community at large, and to preserve the character of the neighborhoods as related to residential structures renting to transient occupants. And while that's well-worded and well-intended, the components are contradictory to each other, in my opinion. We can't entertain short-term rentals to transient occupants in a way that does not compromise the stability, safety, and welfare of the community at large. However, I did like the term transient occupancy, and so I'm going to refer to the short-term rentals as transient hoteling, as that seems to be more transparent to the way people feel about it in our neighborhood who are not on board with short-term rentals. But let me make it clear that I'm not being derogatory about the term transient. We're all transient lodgers at some point. When we go on vacation, we go to hotels, we go to cruises, we go to resorts, and we impose this risk upon ourselves of going into a transient environment of lodging in favor of the rewards of the destination experience. And we do this of our own free will. But we are being, conversely, when we introduce transient hoteling to residential neighborhoods, this is being imposed on us, not of our free will, and not of our consent, and not with a destination reward, and not for a week. We have to deal with it, possibly for the rest of our lives. Many of our residents have moved to their final destination homes. They want to stay there forever, and it's not a high school cafeteria where if we don't like the conversation next to us, we can move over three tables. And so when I say this, it's not perceived. We've had a lot of discussion about how we can't get excited about the perceived crimes that might happen or things like that. We can only talk about what's actually impacted us. So it's a real-time incident, and I'll tell you why. Because as a residential neighborhood, we have vested and accountable occupants, and they have to face their neighbors every day. And if they have a house party, they keep their relatives and their friends in check because they know they have to be accountable. If they have deviant or children that participate in deviant or actions against your property, they are there to be accountable willingly or unwillingly. But they are there, and they're consistent, and that's what makes it different. This is the greatest complaint surrounding transient occupants in the neighborhood, is who is my neighbor? It's a sheltered thing. We don't know who's there day for day. In a residential neighborhood, it has a look, it has a sound, and it has a pulse. It's, we know the neighbors that are mowing the lawns, walking the dogs. We know what they look like. We may not know them by name, but we know who's there. And, I'm sorry, we may not know all of them, and that, you know, that one car door that we hear slam at 4:00 a.m. in the morning, we all know that's Joe coming back from his UPS job at 4:00 a.m. in the morning. But that has a standard to it. When we introduce transient lodging, of people coming and going all the time, people think about noise as noise. But noise is out-of-place noise. When we do this, we lose the baseline of how our neighborhood sounds. We reach a certain lull at night where we expect to hear certain sounds and not expect to hear certain sounds. And that's what gives us the baseline for waking up when something's out of place. This is seeing the same people all the time. That's the baseline for how a neighborhood watch works. This is the baseline for how police make a criminal investigation. Did you see anything out of place? Did you hear anything strange? When it's happening all the time, at first, it keeps us up to delirium because we're constantly alerted for it, but I'm scared that eventually we'll become numb to it, and we'll just accept noise all the time. And then when somebody really is breaking into our tool shed or our house, we want know. We've lost the standard of baseline to know when something is out of place. This is my biggest fear. We don't know who our neighbors are, and we've lost the baseline for that. So at this point, we've immediately failed the purpose because we can't preserve the character of the neighborhoods in which short-term rentals and transient lodgings exist. I have a special needs daughter who's 21 years old and fully developed, but she's cognitively two and a half years old. We can't in good conscience leave her with the nurse anymore and go off on short-term lunches or dates and know that we have 15 strangers that we don't know the background checks on sitting next door to us. This affects us personally. I realize I'm running out of time. I will finish up the last, last of this. Is that...
I'm sorry, second.
Okay.
But thank you for your comments.
Not a problem. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome to email Commissioners as well. Thank you.
Chairwoman, just going to go through some of these names. I don't think some of these people are here. Debbie Fisher, Roger Summerlin, Christine Rosman, Ray Thomas, and the next one's Mr. Harfoot.
Good afternoon. My name's Craig Harfoot. There's a lot of things I want to talk about. But on these code amendments, you're trying to do too much too fast, and all the attention's on the garbage. But there's a lot of stuff in there that should be going through line by line. And from what I understand, it's like, what, we got 30% of residential properties are rentals in Cobb County. And the bigger problem I see, and it's not even addressed in any of this, but it is really what you should focus on, are the LLC-owned properties, because they're anonymous. And you can't really tag somebody. You can find a rental agent, but that's not the property owner. And limited liability corporation, well, any corporation's a limited liability because it's, you can bankrupt the corporation, but as an individual, you can hold people accountable. But if you don't even know the name of the person that owns this invisible company, that's where all your problems are going to come from, whether it's the garbage, the noise, the whatever. And that's what you should focus on more than any of the other stuff. And just, when you shine a light on them, it's, things will change. And the things that you're trying to change, it'll really improve that. But the, oh, the roads, okay. In that amendment, they were talking about some roads that are too small, and you want the communities to keep up their own new roads. Well, I brought up St. Leon. Now, those roads are too narrow. The truck, the fire trucks can't go in there. And those things need to be addressed. And it's all about density. It's because past, and when they rewrote the codes all these years, you let people build higher and higher densities without adequate road. Without the adequate road, you can't run the garbage trucks in. You can't, you know, it's the streets you're talking about. There are dead ends. And you'd really have to bring them up the code before you can start faulting truck drivers trying to pick up garbage. And, like Indian Hills, and that was built, and it was the Cousins' first property, you know, when they built it. And over the years, the county paved those roads. The county dug up the waterlines that were asbestos, put in new waterlines on the other side of the street, left the asbestos in the ground. But, I mean, it's like the standards aren't high enough for the new construction. If we got to go back and do it, but now you want to say that the homeowner's got to redo it. That's not a good idea either, because I keep hearing that the county doesn't hold people to standards when they're building it. And I know you got input from the Council of Quality Growth, and some of the employees that are drawing up your code were former employees. And the problem with having embedded people, the Council for Quality Growth is actually not just developers, but bankers, the people that finance this stuff, the things, the people that, you know, why we got a bubble, housing, you know, bubble that's about the bus, because the Fed kept rates at zero for so long. And you got the power in zoning, but you need to be a little more, don't go universal yet, go line by line and start fixing these things that, so you don't have to refix the garbage picker. And the biggest problem I see is, I just got my renewal for my natural gas contracts. They're doubling our line on natural gas. This year, people are going to get hit with that. So you got higher taxes on the renters already because of reassessment. We didn't drop back the mileage rate. Now we got higher gas bills and heating bills. Watch what the electric companies do next. And, you know, you got the same problems. Natural gas, if you got these buses running in Cobb County, it's all going to double in price for the fuel. So, please, slow down, table the whole code amendment thing and go through it slower.
Mr. Harfoot.
Thank you.
Mr. Harfoot, thank you. The next person to sign up for public speaking is Monica Delancy, and then the final one is Gilda Dozier. Chairwoman, that's all we have for public comment today.
Thank you. We are now going into our consent agenda portion of our meeting. Prior to this meeting and following, we've had the specific agenda items that compose the consent agendas scrolling on the screen. Commissioners, we've received three modifications for our agenda items. I believe it's for items 23, 25, and 29. The amounts were slightly changed for the matter in item 23, which was the Dell Financial Lease. I believe you should have that sheet. The accounting funds were modified for Agenda Item Number 25. And there is some clarification based on discussion during yesterday's agenda session for us to authorize the action in item 29, with the county being the title holder only and not the applicant for that matter. So with those changes, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? Call the question.
Yes, comments?
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I do not support Agenda Item Number 24 or 29.
Okay, bear with us one moment. Again, 29 is the one where the county will be putting forward that matter as the title holder, and let's look at Agenda Item 25. Oh, 24, excuse me. Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, it's for allocation or reallocation of project savings from Department of Transportation Master Planning. Okay, are there any comments or questions? We'll call the question. Commissioner Gamble?
I support the consent agenda.
Except for the two matters that you stated.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So we have support of the consent agenda as it has been revised, again acknowledging that Commissioner Gamble is not in support of Agenda Items Number 24 and 29. Okay. Since we have the approval of our new Economic Development Director, we are now moving on to our transportation tab.
Good morning again. DOT has seven items for your consideration this morning on the regular agenda.
Thank you.
Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with IP Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $2,911,594.21 for Old Alabama Road Sidewalk, Project Number X 2769, authorize corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
In Commissioner Sheffield's absence, I will move as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Again, just happy to see this project move forward as the residents are in this community. Call the question. Commissioner Gamble?
I support.
Thank you. The motion passes. The motion passes for zero with Commissioner Sheffield being absent.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Powder Springs for Intersection Improvements on Powder Springs Road at Flint Hill Road, Pine Grove Drive, project number X2312, and on Powder Springs Road at Deer Creek Drive, project number X2325. Authorize corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
I support.
Thank you. The motion passes for zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Bells Ferry Road over Noonday Creek, project number B2101, and authorize the negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, Pond and Company.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to, motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question.
I support.
Thank you. The motion passes for zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a framework agreement with the City of Acworth in an amount not to exceed $3 million for 2022 special purpose local option sales, tax joints, city projects. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question.
I support.
Thank you. The motion passes for zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the county manager authorizing emergency drainage repairs on Sunny Lane in response to a sinkhole and voids. Approve project number X22101 to the 2021 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Advanced Sports Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $179,162 for said repairs. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
I support.
Thank you. The motion passes for zero.
Thank you. Our next item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2011 Transportation Improvements Program funded primarily by the 2011 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax and authorize the corresponding budget transactions per the 2011 SPOSS Transportation Improvements Program budget and schedule attached therein.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
I support.
The motion passes for zero.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $338,499 for drainage system repairs on Gramercy Drive, project number B2241. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
I support.
The motion passes for zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. We are now on to our Public Services tab, and we'll hear from our Parks Director.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. We have three items for consideration this afternoon. Our first is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Triscapes Incorporated to provide construction services related to the building of the first phase of Viladef Stout Park under the 2016 Park SPOSS Program. Viladef Stout Park is a 300-acre park located off Brownsville Road and Stout Parkway in Powder Springs. The master plan for the park was approved by the BOC on May 28, 2019. This is an eligible project under the 2016 Park SPOSS. This is the first phase, which would include roadway and entry improvements on Brownsville Road, an uncovered show ring, parking, and a restroom facility. We ask that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Triscapes Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $2.949,412.83 for construction services at Viladef Stout Park for the 2016 Cobb's Park SPOSS Program. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Don't forget Commissioner Gambrell's interests. All right. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Michael. This is a long time coming.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Call the question.
I support.
Thank you. Motion passes for zero.
Our second item is for the Board of Commissioners to authorize the advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to perform engineering design services for various projects in the 2022 Park SPOSS Program. Further authorize the issuance of requests for proposals to procure these services.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yeah. Go ahead.
Michael.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, now we'll still, we'll have to have the public hearings.
On this.
Will they be done as individually? What parks are on the list or?
Not individually.
All in one?
All in one. This is, this is for all of the 2022, which there aren't that many. 2022 doesn't have that many that will need engineering design over $100,000 because we just don't have that many parks that are going to be new or anything like that. So it's mostly going to be a lot of renovations.
Okay. But we will identify which ones they are.
Absolutely. For certain ones, specifically avenues or downs, that will be one. There's, there's a few others.
Okay. Thank you.
Our final item is to approve.
Okay.
Did we vote? Did we vote?
When in mind.
Oh, did y'all vote? I thought y'all voted. I'm sorry.
Not yet, but thank you.
No, I had discussion.
Oh, you had a, that's a question. I'm sorry.
It's all good. I know we're all trying to move things along. Appreciate your support.
I'm trying to get you out of here.
Call the question.
Yes. Call the question.
I support.
Thank you. Motion passes for zero.
All good now. Our final item is to approve a contract with Summit Construction and Development LLC to provide construction services for stormwater, storm sewer rehabilitation at Fair Oaks Park under the 2022 Park SPOSS Program. The 2022 Park SPOSS Program includes subsurface infrastructure funding for the replacement of systems, including stormwater management, that have exceeded their reasonable service life. The stormwater piping at the Recreation Center at Fair Oaks Park is failing and must be replaced to prevent further deterioration of the area. We ask that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Summit Construction and Development LLC for an amount not to exceed $321,304.28 to replace an existing storm sewer at Fair Oaks Park under the 2022 Cobb Park SPOSS Program. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
I support.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We now have Finance.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Finance has one item for you today. We are asking the Board of Commissioners authorization to re, for the reallocation of a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funding in order to return unspent funding that was previously approved and no longer needed to contingency. Authorize the appropriation of earned, her earned interest in the APR Fund and approve the recommended allocations based on the investment strategy guidance received from Deloitte Consultants LOB. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and to further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question.
I do not support.
Thank you. The motion passes 3-1 with Commissioner Gambrell in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are now up at our County Managers tab, and we'll have a presentation by our Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. We have a series of agenda items for you today that kind of kicks off the approval of American Rescue Plan Act funding. With the Board's indulgence, I'd like to give just a very brief synopsis on how we've gotten to this point, so that those who may be tuned in understand how we've, how we've gotten here. Congress enacted the American Rescue Plan Act back in 2021, and it was signed into law. Cobb County received two tranches of funding from the federal government, totaling $147,648,478. After going through a RFQ process, our consultant, Deloitte Consulting, came on board in October of last year, and we began to develop our processes of going through the requests and allocating these funds. Over 3,000 touchpoints were made with residents and organizations through surveys, webinars, various types of meetings, and then also a workshop, which culminated that process. The process did culminate in the approval of the county's investment guidance report on April 12 of this year. A brief summary of that guidance report shows we ended up with five overarching funding categories. Community health at $25.7 million, which includes mental health, public health disparities, substance abuse, healthcare capacity, and COVID-19 mitigation. The second is support services at $23.3 million, which includes affordable housing, homelessness, rental and mortgage assistance, and food security. The third is economic development at $22.4 million, which includes workforce development, small and minority-owned business, employee retention, and hospitality and tourism recovery. The fourth is county infrastructure totaling $19.7 million, which includes county facilities, stormwater, and broadband and digital equity. And then the final overarching funding bucket is public safety at $17.2 million, which includes mental health response, court backlog, public safety hiring, retention, and staffing, as well as first response. A public applic, application process opened on June 6, and applications began being submitted to the county. The evaluation process began as the applications started coming in. To kind of take you through a real quick synopsis of how, what happens to that application when it comes in. First of all, it is screened by Deloitte as to whether it is eligible or not for ARPA consideration. Those deemed eligible were then referred to the appropriate subcommittee to be graded. And I'd like to give you also the, the factors by which each of the applications were graded. The criteria was equity, financial continuity, impact, leverage, risk mitigation, the project budget, project plan, and then the key performance indicators that was included with each one of the applications. Those are the factors that each one of the applications was rated on. We have the first four applications that have made it through what we're affectionately calling the gauntlet, because it is no, it is no easy task to, to go through all the different, or to get over all the hurdles that an application must, must get through. The first, which is for agenda item number 49, the Cobb Collaborative proposes three mental health training sessions over the course of a year that will target law enforcement, first responders, and child and family-serving organizations. It falls squarely within the county's community health priority area and then the mental health subtopic. For this first, or this initial application approval, includes the Board's approval of our standard subrecipient agreement as to form. Due to the size of the agreement, future items will not have the agreement included, but they will be available in the county clerk's office should someone want to view them. The subrecipient agreement has been approved by the county attorney's office. They've been involved in the process since day one. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners approve the standard subrecipient agreement for ARPA allocations. Authorize the appropriation of funds received pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 in the amount of $69,300 to the Cobb Collaborative, project number 1.29, to support community health with this mental health training project to assist those negatively affected by COVID-19. Approve the subrecipient agreement with Cobb Collaborative. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman or her designated to execute the subrecipient agreement and any other necessary documents for said purpose.
Thank you, Jimmy. I know we had a lot of discussion around this yesterday, so I'm going to make a, I will put forward a motion and hopefully get a second for purposes of discussion, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yeah. So I move that we approve this agenda item as presented.
Second and discussion.
Yes.
Can you, just for the public, explain the application process? And maybe how many we've received so far? How they are vetted and how it comes to us for approval?
Sure.
And moving forward with our discussion yesterday, how we're going to do a summary of, of each one when it comes to us, so that we know that they've met all the requirements and are eligible.
Sure. We had an application that was available for download or for hard copy completion. As the interested organizations got the application and started work on the application, Deloitte staff was always accessible to the applicants as far as asking questions, making sure that their, number one, their project idea was ARPA-eligible. And number two, in their, in the terminology used within their application, that they said what they actually meant would be ARPA-eligible. So it was a very user-friendly process. I believe they spent countless hours on the phone with various applicants making sure that, okay, you've got a great idea, but you need to say it the right way. You need to make sure that you're, you're, you're hitting all the touchpoints that you need to, to have. When that application comes in, our partners at Deloitte took the application. They scrub it based on ARPA legislation. Make sure that it is absolutely ARPA-eligible. And then it is, it is referred over to one of the five subcommittees over the areas which we discussed a moment ago. That subcommittee then goes through and evaluates based on the criteria that I gave you. And oftentimes, there were additional questions or additional clarifications that was needed on each one of the applications. So our partners at Deloitte would then go back to the applicant, say, all right, here's the four or five questions which the, the subcommittee has. It needs clarification. Needs to be more concise. It came back, and then it would be either voted up or voted down. Once it made it through that step in the process, it would then go back to Deloitte, to their compliance division, which would evaluate the organization as far as their, their risk assessment. Because an organization with a, with a higher risk after going through financials and all that good stuff may have additional reporting requirements. They may have additional training that we can offer them to make sure that they're compliant, they're doing their reporting on time, they're giving the right information. Because in the end, we will be held accountable for these funds. And it's very important that the, our applicants or our grantees in the future understand that, and will be held accountable, just like we will be. So, but then an organization that may do federal grants all the time may not have quite as many items that they have to do on the compliance side because they're, they're well-versed in federal regulations. So they do that, and then it comes back to us to submit an agenda item. Going forward, what we, what our plan is to do, along with each agenda item, we will have a, a, for the lack of a better term, an executive summary of each one of the applications. With the organization, the project name, the scope of the project that will be done. There was a, a section in the application, I believe it was 250 words or less, that described what the project would be doing. And then we will, oh, the project budget. I believe there was one other thing that we were going to add on there. And then that will be added to the agenda item for, for the Board's consideration. Of course, the complete applications are free to be reviewed and gone through if there are specific questions that certain Board members may have on the applications.
I appreciate the entire process and appreciate all the openness around it. I know I expressed some concerns yesterday, things that I do want to make sure are being interpreted. We know some, we know that the applications that are going to make it through subcommittee are real needs, real identified needs in the community, and so to make sure that we're being supportive of that, it's the idea of making sure we're approving something and then not looking to have it taken away if it's solving a real core problem. So, yeah, I do still have some open questions. I know I'm speaking generally now about this section and what's to come, but I know with regards to this first tranche, some of those opportunities are still available to work through and make sure that we're closing those operational gaps. So with that, I am happy to lend my support in these particular agenda items, but I did want to make sure that those concerns were expressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gamble, did you have any comments?
No comments.
Thank you. All right, I'll call the question.
I support.
Thank you. The motion passes 4-0.
Our second agenda item is also a grant application for ARPA funds. Atlanta's Growing Leadership of Women proposes to support a range of proactive youth-focused mentoring, life skills training, workforce readiness, and leadership development services. All of the funding will be used to serve underserved youth, youth of color, economic disadvantaged, and/or disability who face significant barriers to education and/or employment, and/or whose households have been adversely affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. After going through the process, this project aligns with the county's Economic Development Priority Area and the Workforce Development Subtopic, and is also within the guidance allocations previously established by the board. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners approves and appropriate, we ask that the board approve an appropriation of funds received pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 in the amount of $749,123 to the Atlanta Grow, Growing Leadership of Women Incorporated, Project 1.10, to support economic development with this training program to assist those negatively affected by COVID-19. Approve the subrecipient agreement, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman or her designated to execute the subrecipient agreement and any other necessary documents for said purpose.
All right, so moved. Second, is there any discussion? Commissioner Burl.
Jimmy, did we verify that they do operate in Cobb?
Yes, ma'am.
And these will only be going to Cobb residents?
Yes, ma'am. They're a Cobb-based business, even though it does have Atlanta in front of their name. It is, they are headquartered here in Cobb, and it will be just for Cobb County programs.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Call the question.
Do not support.
Thank you. The motion passes 3-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Our third item is also for ARPA allocation. The availability of ambulances in our community was, was and still is being significantly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, creating delays at hospitals, a diminished workforce, and increased response times. State law permits medical first responders to transport patients in life-threatening situations or by orders of licensed physicians when a licensed ambulance cannot respond. These funds would provide for the purchase of six vehicles capable of safely transporting patients to a hospital. Each apparatus would be fully stocked and would replace current vehicles in the Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services Fleet, and they will be placed geographically, they will be geographically distributed across the county with one unit per fire battalion. Chairwoman, I apologize, this is item number 52. You want me to start back over on 51 or keep going 52?
Why don't you keep going, Jimmy?
Okay, I apologize for that. My purple tab's stuck together. This project does align with the county's Community Health Priority Area and the Healthcare Capacity Subtopic. Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services does have vehicles which transports their paramedics out to accident or emergency scenes. However, they are not transport-capable. These six would replace six that they have, currently have, and would allow them to transport any patients in the event that ambulances are not available at that time. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve an appropriation of funds received pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 in the amount of 2.1 million to Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services, Project Number 1.2, to support community health with this expansion of medical service with the purchase of transport rescue vehicles to assist with those negatively affected by COVID-19, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman or her designated to execute any necessary documents for said purpose.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
One. Just a question that's came up from the community, and curious as well, are we still experiencing that type of lag with resources?
Absolutely.
Do you know what the scope of that is?
Mainly because as ambulances transport a patient to an emergency room, they cannot leave until that patient is accepted into a room. Once they're accepted into a room, then they can go back into service. And I can know that firsthand, I actually got to do that not too many weeks ago. They had to stay with me the entire time until I was put into a room. So once, if a, if a fire, if fire police are on the scene and all the ambulances are sitting at the emergency room, they just have to sit there.
Understood. And so, where, this is related to kind of the queuing that's going on at the hospital itself?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Call the question.
I support.
Thank you. The motion passes 4-0. We'll now go back to Agenda Item 51.
51, and I apologize for that, Chairwoman. This is also an ARPA allocation item. In partnership between the Cobb County Medical Examiner's Office and the Cobb and Douglas Public Health, this is a program for comprehensive respiratory testing of all decedents, decadence, descendants, and expeditious reporting to public health. This is a program which, it was started a couple of years ago between the Cobb County Medical Examiner's Office and Cobb and Douglas Public Health. The funding has run out, but however, the usefulness and the imperative nature of getting that type of information to Cobb and Douglas Public Health is very vital. The use of accurate, real-time data to inform decision-making is essential for infectious disease control, and this funding would allow that partnership to continue. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve an appropriation of funds from funding received pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 in the amount of $204,409 to the Cobb County Medical Examiner's Office and Cobb and Douglas Public Health, Project Number 1.17, to support community health, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman or her designated to execute the necessary documents for said purpose.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, Jimmy, in the, it's on page 439, so that way you know where I'm looking. There is a line, it says a separate ARPA application has been made for $732,501.
Yes, ma'am. That is still, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That is still in the subcommittee review process. It, it complements this portion of that grant program. Whether or not it will make it out is yet to be seen. It's, it's still under review.
And, so that was going to be my question, is are they going to be able to carry on this work without this equipment?
I believe the line that you're referencing is all Cobb County Medical Examiner Office staff, lab equipment, and medical testing supplies costs are proposed under the CCMEO ARPA Request Cobb County Medical Examiner Recovery Plan. Yes, if this is not eligible, they would have to get a lot of those supplies from the Cobb County stockpile, which has some of those supplies. Some of the equipment they already had, because they were doing the program to start off, you know, for the last two, for the last two years, there'll also be an application coming for the Cobb County stockpile. So it's, we're going to get it taken care of through one of about three different ARPA applications.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Call the question.
I support.
Thank you. The motion passes 4-0.
And our final item, item number 53, I believe, is to approve change order number two with Deloitte Consulting LLP to secure the second-year option for our 2021 American Rescue Plan Act consulting services. As I mentioned earlier, Deloitte came on board with us in October of last year. They have basically served as our Cobb County Grants Department. They have helped us tremendously through this process. They have started out weekly calls and daily phone calls, but now we're up to four and five meetings a day as we're in this subcommittee process. Everything from shepherding the subcommittees to eligibility review to compliance, and then it'll also morph into reporting and compliance as the money starts coming back in. So they, we consider them a vital member of our team in, in rolling out this program. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve change order number two with Deloitte Consulting LLP in an amount not to exceed $2,304,000 to secure the second-year option for 2021 American Rescue Plan Act consulting services, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
I think you're so moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Burl.
Jimmy, when this was awarded, was there a total amount not to exceed, or?
There was an amount for each year.
Each year, okay.
Based upon what the board decided to do. Because when we had the initial first year approved, I believe it was 2.7 and some change, in that agenda item, it also said if the board so chooses, it can pick up the second and third-year option if they'd like to. But that's, that would be a board decision that we would bring back each year.
Right. So it'll be renewed on an annual basis?
Yes, ma'am.
With a different amount?
Sure, well, it all depends on where we are in the process. Once we, for instance, if, by this time next year, we're standing here, if we are, we should be through with the allocation process and it's strictly reporting, that amount obviously would come down for that. But it just depends on where we are in the process, how many have come in, and where we are.
Okay. So this is for a one-year term?
Yes, ma'am.
For a designated amount?
Yes, ma'am.
And they have been doing a lot with the application process, which is closed, and I think there's over 100 and some, 140 some?
Oh, we.
More?
Yeah, more.
Okay.
More.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments or questions? Call the question.
I support.
Thank you. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. We are now, okay, there is no one else signed up for our second public comment, so we will now go to our appointments tab. Commissioner Burl, I'll turn things over to you for an announcement.
I would like to announce the reappointment of Carlton Stock to the Neighborhood Safety Commission, and thank him for his years of service to continue.
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, no vote is needed, that's just an announcement.
Correct.
With that, we are now at our Commissioner's Public Address. And Commissioner Gamble, I know you are remote, are you okay with providing comments today?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, very good. And I see there are some slides queued up. Feel free to go ahead whenever you're ready.
So again, congratulations, that Cobb has now received its AAA rating for 25 consecutive years. The ratings come from the Finch Group, Moody's, and S&amp;P Global Ratings, and consider the big three agencies. This milestone marks not only an accomplishment for the county's finance team, but CFO Bill Wulffman says it benefits all county residents. So again, congratulations. Explore Price Park in its amazing nightlife at this Friends of Price Park event from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 17th, at 4715 Stylesborough Road in Kennesaw. On this family-friendly evening hike, you can hear Dennis Krusek's famous owl impersonations and maybe see a resident owl. During the warm months, learn about bat echolocation with Dennis's bat detectors. When it's lightning bug season, be prepared to see the park transformed into a fairyland. Bring your flashlights and wear comfortable clothing and walking shoes. Leave the pets at home, but we will meet at the new flagpole. See you there. And lastly, it's the Magical Pumpkin Patch coming soon. Mark your calendars for Saturday, October 27th, for Commissioner Gamble's Fourth Annual Pumpkin Day at Still Family Farm. Details and flyers are up front for you to pick up before you leave. And that means, to all departments, the challenge is on for you to submit your departmental pumpkin to the Board of Commissioners for viewing and voting by our public, all-to-benefit safe path. We look forward, again, the first year's challenge was won by senior services, and last year was the Parks Department. So game on.
Thank you. I believe that concludes Commissioner Gamble's address. That will move on to Commissioner Richardson.
Bueno. So Hispanic Heritage Month, Thursday marks the first day of Hispanic Heritage Month. This is a time to recognize and celebrate the contributions and influences of Hispanic America to the history, culture, and achievements of our country. From the office, so first aid and CPR training. Join my Education Cabinet Chair Laura Judge and Cobb County Fire and EMA to take part in a free first aid and CPR awareness program for high schoolers, where you'll learn skills dealing with bleeding control, head injury response, allergic reaction response, and choking response. We have two opportunities. The first will be Monday, September 26th, at Sewell Mill Library, and the second on Monday, October 17th, at East Cobb Library. Make sure to sign up as soon as space is limited to 30 people, space is limited to 30 people per session. Community Huddle is coming up this Saturday, September 17th. We had quite a few people join the last Community Huddle. We talked about code amendments, so I think it was popular for a reason. This one, of course, we do this every two weeks, and it's open. The community drives the conversation. You can ask me anything on there, and we'll talk about everything. From the community, Lunch and Learn Septic System Basics. Learn about general care, maintenance, and what every septic tank owner should know about maintaining a healthy and pollution-free septic system with the Water Department on September 23rd, October 21st, and November 18th. There will be an in-person option at the Cobb County Water Quality Lab and virtual option online. Sign up using the QR code or online at cobbcounty.org/events. Lastly, Before Slavery Sankofa Festival. The Before Slavery Museum is celebrating an international sankofa festival, September 25th, 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Taylor Bronner Park. Come joy, come enjoy Twanda Black, Milkshake Mayfield, Erhur dancers, DJ Samuel Davis, dignitaries from the embassies of Ghana. dignitaries from the embassies of Ghana, Nigeria, Mali, the African Diaspora Collective, and local officials. Enjoy a sneak peek of the new museum onsite. Get free health screenings and voter registration will be on hand. Food vendors and other exciting vendors will be there as well. You can purchase your tickets at beforeslavery.com. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. Last week, we lost two members of our Cobb family. Sheriff deputies Jonathan Koleski and Deputy Marshal Irvin were killed in the line of duty while serving a warrant. This has really impacted not just the Cobb law enforcement community, but all of us and citizens as well. So the outpouring of support and condolences has just really been exceptional. And we ask that you keep the families and our Cobb family in your prayers. Deputy Koleski's funeral services will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, September fourteenth, at noon at North Star Church in Kennesaw. And Deputy Marshal Irwin's, Irvin Junior's funeral service will be held on Thursday, September fifteenth, at two PM at West Ridge Church in Dallas. Thank you. On Saturday, we had our annual Fish with Your Commish and Conversation with Your Cop at Ebenezer Downs Park. And we had a good turnout, but not a great turnout because the weather wasn't very nice. But we had a great time talking with our police, a lot of support, and got to know some of our neighbors and citizens in Cobb. And we appreciate all the support from Parks, staff, and the Georgia Natural Resources Department, Cobb Public Safety, and all for helping make this a big success. Also on Saturday, we had a ribbon cutting for our new and beautiful Elections Department. Everything's under one roof now, so we congratulate Janine Evler on her accomplishments and vision and property management and everybody that had a part with this new home. Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets. We had two more adoptions this past week for a total of two hundred and twenty-three adoptions. Mr. Gaddy served sixteen years in the Navy and has given Cricket a new loving place to call home. Ms. Brown served eight years in the Army, and she and her husband opened their hearts to this beautiful little lady on the right. And we also have a special going on, twenty dollars, dogs or cats, for dogs over twenty-five pounds and cats. But for veterans through the Superior Pet Program, adoptions are free at the Cobb County Animal Shelter. Cobb Diaper Day is back, and it's virtual. You can donate online at cobbdiaperday.com. You can purchase them on Amazon through the Cobb Diaper Day wishlist, and you can declare a collection day at workplaces and organizations with families and friends. There's two Wednesdays in October that have been designated for dropping off diapers at the Solar Flower Garden of Cobb EMC, one hundred EMC Parkway, Marietta, and October twelfth, from nine to noon, and October twenty-sixth, from four to six. Once collected, the diapers will, that are donated, will be going to Cobb Douglas Public Health, Teen Pregnancy Program, Communities and Schools of Georgia in Marietta and Cobb, Live Safe Resources, Mus Ministries, Sir Familia, Simple Needs Georgia, Sweetwater Mission, and the Center for Family Resources. You heard this morning with the proclamation for the DAR, the Fielding Lewis Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution invite you to join in the Ringing of the Bell Celebration this Saturday, September seventeenth, at three PM in Glover Park on the Marietta Square. This event celebrates the signing of the U.S. Constitution on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven. May we never forget the importance of our Constitution. And then October twelfth, from five to seven, at the Senior Wellness Center, eleven fifty Powder Springs Street, we will be hosting How to Do Business with Cobb Government and Cobb County Schools. If you're a company who is interested in becoming a vendor with Cobb County or Cobb Schools, you don't want to miss this upcoming free seminar, How to Do Business with Cobb and Cobb Schools, five to seven PM, Wednesday, October twelfth, at the Senior Wellness Center. This is a wonderful chance to learn about vendor opportunities, meet government and school representatives, network with other business owners, and hear about the local vendor preference ordinance. Registration is required, but it is free. You can register by emailing kimberly.jorgensen@cobbcounty.org or call our office at seven seven oh five two eight three three one seven. And again, congratulations to Cobb County for twenty-five years. What is so funny? Twenty-five years with the triple triple A bond rating. This is a great accomplishment. As you heard earlier, only three counties in Georgia have this rating, and I believe forty-nine overall in the United States. So thank you to our finance team and all of our departments for a job well done. Congratulations. Thank you. Were you timing me?
Commissioner Sheffield, if you have any slides?
Does Deidra want to?
Do you want to speak to them, Commissioner Assistant? Yes, why don't you come up and fill in for your commission?
All right.
All right.
Our deputy commissioner.
With us, Ms. Deidra Watts, who is Commissioner Sheffield's assistant, who will be providing updates for today.
Got it. Thank you. Gotta learn this time, it's over here. From our office, Commissioner Sheffield just wanted to offer our condolences to the families of our slain officers. We just want everybody to know that, you know, just to keep them in prayer and that we're praying, and we just think this is a very sad, unfortunate situation, and we just want to extend our heartfelt, heartfelt condolences. So join Commissioner Sheffield along with Parks Director Michael Brantley. They'll host their second annual town hall meeting on September the nineteenth, from six thirty to eight PM at History Makers Church, at seventy-six Wendy Hill Road in Marietta. This meeting will discuss the community input survey results and the design team's next step, so we hope that you guys join us next Monday. All right, we have our next town hall coming up. We hope that you guys will join us for our town hall. You want to know what's going on in D four? You need to be there. It will be on Thursday, the twenty-second, from six thirty to eight PM, and we'll share, Commissioner Sheffield, we'll share development updates, residential updates, upcoming construction projects, more D four exciting news. Chief Stuart Van Heuser will be there to share his vision for Cobb. We'll have Cobb Code Enforcement Division Manager Kathy Pickett, and the community development, Jessica Gwynne will be there. So we look forward to seeing you guys, so you can find out all things happening in D four. All right, MIG, Mapleton Improvement Coalition, some of them were here earlier today. They are having an Economic Development Summit on September the thirtieth, from nine to four thirty PM at Riverside Epic Center, and they're asking that you just come because they're going to have a stellar lineup of speakers and local businesses ready to dive in and share some good stuff with you, for all things Mapleton. Anybody like golf? South Cobb Business Association is having a golf tournament, and they ask that you join them on Monday, October the third, from eight to four. The golf tournament is going to be held at the City Club of Marietta. There are a few options to participate. You can register as an individual player, be a part of a team, or be a sponsor. And for more information, you can visit thebirdies.com SBCA. And that's all from D four.
Great job, Deidra. Thank you. Applause, applause. I like that. We should mix that up a bit. It's very nice. This past weekend, we were able to kick off our Youth Commission, and just a lot of interaction by some very promising youth across the county. Want to thank Commissioner Burl for coming by and engaging with us on a fun activity called iCivics, and it's reflected in the next screen. It's a game that simulates what a day in the life is like being a commissioner. And if we can scroll to, if we don't have the next image, but there's another image that shows our score. We played an online version of being a commissioner, and this was the highest score. The students had an eighty-four percent approval rating as a commissioner, even though they raised sales tax and property taxes twice in four years. Commissioner Burl was not happy about that.
But I did ask if I could have that eighty-four percent for reelection.
That's right. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. Just want to remind our business owners in the county that you should be receiving your online renewal notice. Please go ahead and get those in. Want to also congratulate our Elections Facility or Elections Department for your new facility. What a wonderful redesign of the Mansour Center. I think it's going to help with easing our elections process this November. They have some new options inclusive of a separate line for those who may be physically disabled or elderly, which should help get them moving through the line a little bit quicker. There's daylight actually flowing through the facilities where you vote, and I'm pretty sure that our employees will feel more at ease with all of the technology that's been added into the buildings and with having the elections equipment housed in the same facility where elections is being provided. Commissioner Burl, you had a busy Saturday. I didn't realize you had Fish with the Commish that day. As Commissioner Richardson shared, kicking off on September fifteenth, we have National Hispanic Heritage Month, and we certainly want to thank our residents from very, various Hispanic countries that are here in Cobb County. We certainly felt your contribution at our recent international festival and look forward to celebrating with you over the next thirty days. As was shared by other commissioners, our condolences go out to the families of Deputy Koleski and Deputy Irvin. It's just a tragic event that had occurred in Cobb County, and all of us are just grieved by what occurred and just underscores the amount of vulnerability that face all of our men and women in uniform. And I ask that we just send up a special prayer or thought towards them as they're serving to keep our county safe. And again, here are service information, both the visitations, service and burial for Deputy Koleski tomorrow, and on Thursday, it'll follow for Deputy Irvin. And there is a foundation for the sheriff's office, and people can donate to their families at cobbsheriffssfoundation.org. Also, I don't see any additional slides, but certainly want to thank everyone for their participation in today's meeting. We had a robust discussion around our code amendments. Just encourage you to please stay a part of this process. It is a shared process with the county, with our residents, and with our business owners that we can make sure that we are addressing issues that come before the board. Don't forget that we'll be voting on those amendments at the end of September, on September twenty-seventh, and that the proposed ordinance for sanitation has been pulled. With that, thank you all for sticking with us for a longer-than-expected Board of Commissioners meeting, and we look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you, and our meeting is adjourned.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.